Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It's a little bit after 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 12th, 2025. We have a couple of traditions that you go with, go through with us this evening. The first is that we begin our meetings with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. This evening, it'll be, the pledge will be led by Councilperson Curtis DeBon.
(Applause). To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Councilperson Azar.
President.
Councilperson Bowlin.
President.
Councilperson Chalos.
President.
Councilperson DeBon.
Here.
Councilperson Dingle.
Present.
Councilperson, I lost my place, Hinton.
Present.
Councilperson Lattimil.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Councilperson Thompson.
Here.
All are present.
Thanks, Michelle. Another of our traditions is to allow up to 30 minutes for public comment on non-agenda items. If you are here to address the council on something that's not on tonight's agenda, or you're here to address us on something that's on the agenda, but you'd like to talk about something else that's not, now's the time. I think most people are here to talk to us about the agenda items. I do have a couple of very quick announcements. This Saturday, June 14th, the day after tomorrow, is a busy day in Terre Haute. There are two things that I will be personally involved in that I wanted to share with the community. The first is a No Kings protest that is being organized by Indivisible Wabash Valley. It'll occur from 10:00 a.m. until noon at the Vigo County Courthouse. This peaceful protest is the most recent in a series of bi-weekly protests held by Indivisible Wabash Valley to protest things that are happening at the federal level that are impacting everybody, including the city of Terre Haute. The other things, the other thing that I'd like to make a quick announcement about is the Sixth Street Arts Festival. This is the fourth year that the 4140 Arts and Cultural District will be holding a free arts festival on North Sixth Street. This is the block between Wabash Avenue and Cherry, and it'll occur from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. I have about 30 artists selling their stuff, a stage with live entertainment, and children's area, food, et cetera. It's free, and I encourage the community to come out and participate with us. Michelle, are there any corrections to the journal?
There are none.
Communication from the mayor? Welcome, Mayor.
Good evening, Council President Nation and members of the Terre Haute City Council. I apologize, I'm not in my normal seat today. We've got quite a packed house, so I'll be rather brief. Redevelopment is nearing completion of one of the many infrastructure projects that this council, as well as the Redevelopment Commission, has approved. The first of which is a $150,000 water main extension. That is occurring out along 46. When that project happened, we instantly received $3.1 million in private sector investment. I think a lot of people will relate and know what that project is because the Chipotle sign is out there, and we look forward to doing a few more infrastructure projects out there that will continue to lead to commercial success. Earlier this week, Director of Redevelopment Jordan Marvel did sign the purchase agreement for 12th and Wabash. Those terms are public. They can, if you would like them, we will also email them out. The city, for a $13.1 million, initially, I was under the impression it was 12, with the updated designs and updated costs, it's 13.1. $13.1 million from the private sector to build apartments in downtown Terre Haute. What the city is doing is, we are doing $300,000 worth of infrastructure around that area that will, of course, serve that apartment complex, but also some of the surrounding neighbors within downtown Terre Haute. And the parcel will be given to them under the contract terms for $1. They are not asking for a tax abatement. We added that in the purchase agreement to make sure that would not happen. They are not asking for a pilot, that's a payment in lieu of taxes, which we made sure to add to the agreement. With regards to legislative updates, I do have a packet for Councilwoman Hinton on her, on the housing project that we've been working on. I call it Across the Street from Bob Evans, because everyone knows where Bob Evans is. That project is an income-based housing project. They still have, thankfully, their federal tax credits to do that project. And the state law was not changed, so we, they will be pursuing a payment in lieu of taxes instead of a local check from local government to build those income-based units. I will bring copies of that Indiana code. I will pass that on to Councilwoman Hinton, so she has that packet to review, as well as send out to all of you before that next meeting. I will also scan it and send it via email so it can be added to council correspondence. We have our finalized drafts of the rental registry and property maintenance ordinance, so those will be coming to you all. And again, that's part of our big legislative push for this calendar year. We did have two meetings with the Historic Preservation Ordinance. There are still a couple of questions that we have, but Tommy Kleckner has been great to work with and is helping the city kind of get to where we need to be. The next step that I'm doing is reaching out to some of the firms that do the historic survey, because our survey, I found out, is from 1980, and it notes what buildings are historic, and we've had a 45-year gap. So a number of buildings in our community that could be receiving historic tax credits or could apply for grants cannot, because we have not updated that. So we'll be going forth, going through the survey process, and we haven't quite decided if we'll do it with that ordinance or even without. So I wanted to update you all on that. Lastly, I am so happy the legislative session is over. I think many people are. And I'm pretty frustrated because it has been confirmed now that for the city of Terre Haute to receive Community Crossings Grant, as well as what's known as a direct disbursement from the state of Indiana for roads, the city of Terre Haute must implement a wheel tax on top of the county. To me, that does not make sense, because our county already has a wheel tax. So the state of Indiana, and the great wisdom that is currently bestowed to the individuals who go to Indianapolis a couple months out of the year, have decided for Terre Haute, we do about $3.7 million in paving now, which is an increase from previous years. We are eligible for a direct disbursement of about $1 to $1.1 million starting in 2028. To do that, this council would have to pass an additional wheel tax. However, also in their infinite wisdom, they forgot to put a number on that amount. So I am going to propose some numbers that are incredibly low, because in my personal opinion, it does not make sense to double-tax individuals in the city versus the county. We are working on that. We are going to write it to where it takes an effect in 2028, so it can be passed now, and we have it locked in, just in case they change any state legislation. So please, you know, expect that, that is coming. Lastly, we just accepted the bids for our second sidewalk work order. We actually aren't even complete with the work on the first work order, but we still put the second one out to bid to stay on construction timeline. Thankfully, great news here, it came in about $25,000 under budget, is what the bid estimate was, and that is going to go to Dennis Trucking. That work, we anticipate starting end of July or early August, and of course, every time I say that, it ends up being an additional month. So we'll see how that one plays out, but I'll stand by for any additional questions, and of course, go Pacers. Thank you.
Of course. Pacers.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor?
No, thank you.
Keep moving. Thanks. Reports from city officials?
There are none.
Reports from the Board of Public Works and Safety?
I, there are none.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Non-standing committees?
There are none. Mr. President, the petitioners ask if Special Ordinance 18 could be heard first. You can move it to the next item on the agenda.
I'd like to move Special Ordinance Number 18 to the next, to the first item of business.
Special Ordinance 18, 2025, rezoning a property located at 501 and 601 South Fruit Ridge, area planning gave it favorable with conditions recommendation.
Welcome, Eddie.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Eddie Felling, Linden Felling Law Firm. As I mentioned before, it's my sincere privilege to be here this evening on behalf of the landowner and the developers with the proposed rezoning and what will be attached, TIF request established, districts that are, we're asking you to establish later on in the agenda. This marks the seventh meeting, seventh public hearing we've had on this. I did the math, we're around 20-plus hours at this point of public comment on this issue, and I'm sure we're in for another long evening tonight. I've noticed, and I'm sure this evening won't be much different, a lot of this discussion is charged with a lot of feelings and emotion, which is understandable considering the nature of the request. And I would ask all of you as council members to focus on the facts when you go to make your decision this evening. Rehash those facts. First, what we've heard from our professionals. Our engineers have told us that traffic is not a problem in this area, and even if this development moves forward, it will not be much different than what it was 10 years ago. But they have provided means from which we can improve the traffic situation on the east side of town. The only way that we can do this is what our CPAs tell us, is through the tax revenue that comes from this development. We can't afford to build, put in a million-dollar traffic circle or traffic light unless we have this development or able to use TIF dollars. Our CPAs also tell us that we stand to make millions of dollars in tax revenue if this development moves forward. Currently, we're making hundreds, maybe single-digit thousands of dollars in taxes off of an empty field. Our business leaders tell us that new developments are not coming to this town, and it continues to shrink because of two things: housing and the state of our schools. You all saw last week a report, or at least the initial portion of a report, that showed that our schools are in a state of disrepair and our enrollment is atrocious. Our school officials tell us that the only way that we can improve that is through enrollment and tax dollars. And how do you do that? Through a housing development. Our community leaders and elected officials, starting with even our area plan officials, have given this a favorable recommendation, not only on the staff level, whose job it is to provide that recommendation, but also through the Area Plan Commission, who are appointed leaders of our community. Your mayor has come out in support of this project. Your county commissioners have come out in support of this project, and many other elected officials that you all, I'm sure, have heard from are in support of this project. So I was going to end with what the attorney said about this project, but nobody cares what attorneys think. So whether you like it or not, you'll get what Eddie Felling's opinion is. I am a sixth-generation Felling on the east side of town. My children are the seventh. I went to Lost Creek, I went to Wilson, I went to Terre Haute North. My children should do the same. I live in the house I grew up in. In two weeks, they're going to find out they're not going to those schools, because at least one of those schools isn't going to exist. And the only way we can make this different for the next generation of Terre Haute is to continue to have this community grow through development, smart development. And this $70 million development is the way to do that. So as you vote this evening, again, I ask you to focus on the facts. I have a few community members that would like to speak briefly before we open it up for public comment. I'd like to start with Commissioner Clinkenbeere.
Good evening, President, Mr. President, and members of the council. My name is Mark Clinkenbeere, Vigo County Commissioner. Tonight, I want to express my strong support for the proposed apartment and housing development along Ohio Boulevard. Addressing our community's housing challenges has been a shared priority for many of us over the past several years. While we've made progress with new residential projects, we haven't seen a development of this scale in decades. A $70 million investment is significant, and the fact that it's being led by a local developer makes it even more exciting. I firmly believe Gibson Development is the right team at the right time to bring this vision to life, and I have full confidence that the end result will be a beautiful, thoughtfully designed addition to our city. This project will provide a major boost to our tax base, helping fund our schools, parks, public safety, and long overdue infrastructure improvements. I understand and respect the concerns of nearby residents. After nearly 30 years in the homebuilding industry, I can say with certainty that a project of this size will never have unanimous support. But it's important to remember that this parcel has long been designated for housing, and I've often wondered why it hasn't been developed until now. In my view, the developers have done an excellent job blending a fresh, modern design with the historic charm of Ohio Boulevard. Change is never easy, but the fear of change has held our community back for far too long. This is a moment where we must show we are ready to make bold, forward-thinking decisions to move Terre Haute and Vigo County ahead. Turning this project away would send the wrong message, not only to this developer, but to others considering investing there, here. Last week, the Area Planning Commission voted 10 to 2 in favor of this project, and I was proud to second their recommendation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you for your continued service to our community.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, I have Julie Hart from Thrive.
Welcome, Julie.
Thank you, Julie Hart, Thrive West Central, President of City Council and County Council Members. Just want to share a little bit about the market potential analysis that we have done over the past several years that indicates the need for housing here in Vigo County. The, you've gotten this information, and we've talked about it over the past several months, and we know that the need alone for our region is 7,515. That's how many housing units our region can support. For Vigo County, being kind of the main city and the hub, we can absorb as many as 4,599 of those households. In saying that, 46% of those households want to be renters, and 38% of those households want single detached family homes. When we're talking about the prices that they can afford, 62% of those with a single-family detached can afford $200,000 to $350,000 homes. That's what they're wanting to see here. Of the 46% of people who want to rent, they can afford, they can afford rental prices between $1,500 and $2,500, and that's what these builds are proposing. This analysis indicates that the annual, the annual potential market absorption on the east side of our corridor commands 25% of the overall consumption that we just spoke about. What that means is that we can expect to absorb between 99 and 124 multifamily units, and that's per year for the next five years. That number can even be greater if the surrounding counties don't build. So what our market potential analysis shows is that it supports the builds that are being presented today. Would also like to add that if any of the council members or anyone here today would like to see this analysis, not only the regional one, the one for Vigo County and all of our surrounding counties, they are on the Thrive West Central website under our Housing tab, and they're open for everyone to see and read. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thanks, Julie. Next, I have Kristen Craig, Terre Haute Chamber of Commerce.
Welcome, Kristen.
Hello, good evening. My name's Kristen Craig, and I serve as President and CEO of the Terre Haute Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight to express my strong support for the proposed housing development. One of the chamber's key initiatives is implementation of the CU in Terre Haute Community Plan. The primary goal of this plan is to increase population. Quite simply, our community's population cannot increase unless we have more housing options, like the development being proposed here tonight. The single-family homes and multifamily housing units this project would create are desperately needed in our market, offering modern housing options that cater to middle and upper-income households. Additionally, the development's location strategically positions it to maximize one of our community's strongest assets, Demming Park. This beautiful park is consistently identified as one of Terre Haute and Vigo County's highlights, and providing opportunities for a variety of housing options within walking distance is a big step forward in our ability to attract and retain top-tier talent. I urge you to approve the necessary measures to facilitate the advancement of this project. By doing so, we will be taking a proactive step toward building a more vibrant, prosperous, and sustainable Terre Haute. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kristen.
Next, we have Councilman Earl Elliott. I think I can still call him Councilman.
President Nation, members of council. I passed out, I hand out with my comments I'm going to make this evening. Some of you may not know, I served on the Terre Haute City Council from 2016 through Last week, my presentation included comments concerning Terre Haute's old housing stock, the $5 million of ARPA funds that the city and the county granted to Thrive for their Homes for the Future program, to support infrastructure costs for housing projects for developers. The goal is 6,000 new front doors by 2030 for Ryan Keller. Ryan's comments to me that I shared, that a community needs housing options of all types and all price ranges to, for, so prospective buyers' needs can be met. This would include single-family homes, townhomes, condominiums, and apartments. I also talked a little bit about my personal history of driving Ohio Boulevard to and from work in my place of worship six or seven days a week since 1977. The distance from the easternmost apartment building on Ohio Boulevard to Demming Park, the setback from the building to the west edge of Fruit Ridge is 167 feet. Fruit Ridge is 22 feet wide. The distance from the east edge of Fruit Ridge to the railroad tracks is another 92 feet. The railroad track plus the rock is another 21 feet wide. Add another 30 feet, because the tracks angle, and you get a total of 332 feet. That's nearly twice the 167 feet. There's very, very little activity on the west side of Demming Park, north of the entrance and exit roads. There are only five parking spots on the exit road, road reasonably close to Fruit Ridge. There are no improvements on the west side of the park. Very few patrons will have a view of the apartment complex while in the park. There was some discussion last week about tenants and renting and so on and so forth, so I contacted my friends at Thompson Thrift and asked them to provide the top five reasons people rent an apartment. Number one, flexibility and mobility. Renting provides the freedom to move without the long-term commitment of homeownership, ideal for young professionals, students, and those testing out a new city. Lower upfront costs. Renting usually requires just a security deposit and a few months' rent, avoiding the high down payments and closing costs associated with buying a home. Minimal maintenance responsibilities. Landlords typically handle repairs and upkeep, making this an attractive option for those who prefer convenience. Access to amenities. Many apartment communities offer amenities like fitness centers, pools, co-working spaces, and security features included in the rent. Financial predictability and short-term savings. Renters avoid property taxes, homeowners association fees, and other costs, making budgeting easier and offering short-term savings. To determine the availability of apartments in our market, I gathered data from seven apartment complexes last Friday on the east and south sides of the city. These seven apartment complexes totaled 1,793 units. And amazingly, there were only 10 vacancies last Friday. 10 out of 1,793, that's an amazing 99.4% occupancy rate, compared to an industry standard of 95% that is considered very strong for an occupancy rate. The logical conclusion I can draw is Terre Haute needs more apartments. The Intech plant down in the Vigo County Industrial Park that's under construction, you have a copy of a recent article that was in the newspaper. 650 high-paying jobs was quoted by the Intech representative in that article. 650 high-paying jobs. Where are those folks going to find the residences and housing options that, that they want? I also commented last week is, why shouldn't other residents of Terre Haute, and new residents moving to Terre Haute, have the opportunity to move into their dream home or apartment on the city's east side? In closing, is this development positive for the greater good of the city? That's part of your decision to make. What message will you send by your vote? Is a city open for growth and development or not? Many developers, prospective developers, and potential future employers will quickly learn of your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl.
Last one, I promise. Andy Vogel from Saturn Becker. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Andy Vogel, CEO of Saturn Becker. As a premier employee in our community, I fully support this project because it addresses a critical need: quality housing and modern housing. This initiative directly supports our ability as employers and as a community to attract and retain talent, foster growth, and ensure Terre Haute continues to thrive. Councilmembers and President, I respectfully urge you to vote for this important project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Mr. President, if I may, I know it's a little bit out of step, but I would ask, out of courtesy to our officials, if the council has any questions for them, if you'd be willing to open it up now, so I can allow them the ability to, to leave if they have other prior commitments.
You're, you're talking about the five people who have just spoken to us.
Yes, yes.
Council?
I don't know if there are, but I want to make sure you get those questions answered if they have to take off.
And I understand. Does anybody have any questions for the five folks who have addressed us on this?
Thank you.
So Eddie, to be clear, that's the end of your presentation, and now we're going into public comment.
Yes, I'd just like to reserve just one moment, as soon as public comment wraps up, if I may, once the public comment is complete.
We have a number of people in the lobby who are here to also address us. We didn't provide a public comment signup sheet, although I'm sure that many of you who are seated want that opportunity and intend to address the council. I'm going to start with the six people in the lobby, and then open the microphone to the folks who are here. I ask that you all, we all try to keep it brief. You noticed that the folks presenting in favor all limited their comments to somewhere around three minutes, and since there are probably a lot of us who are going to be talking tonight, I ask that you try to do the same. I ask that you try to do the same. The first person out in the hallway who signed up is Andy Vocal.
Andy, just about.
All right. So the next person who signed up is Tommy Kleckner, and I think I see him getting wanded in the hallway as he's approaching. Welcome, Tommy.
Didn't make it in the room. I was at the dedication of the Lost Creek Settlement public sculpture, so thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, Indiana landmarks, anytime it perceives a potential threat to a historic resource, a historic landmark, a historic place, rightfully gets concerned. The proposed development as presented is such a perceived potential threat to the historic character of Ohio Boulevard. I hope that you know, and I apologize if I'm repeating, Ohio Boulevard developed over three distinct periods. When it was first platted and laid out in the 1920s and '30s with the historic homes at the west end, post-World War II, mid-20th century, when most of the residential structures on Ohio Boulevard were constructed, and then most recently in 21st century, the far east end. Throughout those periods of development, there was consistency to design, consistency to development, lot size, placement on the lot, general scale of houses. The proposed development as presented appears to disregard that consistency and the context of its location against historic Ohio Boulevard, historic Demming Park, historic Edgewood Grove. Does the city need more quality housing? Absolutely. Must some of this need be met through new construction? Without a doubt. Does this proposed development as presented, is it appropriate for this site? Again, in my opinion, not yet. Can it be modified to be more appropriate and more sympathetic to the setting? I have no doubt that that could be done if the developer were open to it. But that cannot include apartment buildings, multifamily. There is multifamily on Ohio Boulevard, but it is at the commercial node of the Boulevard at 25th and Ohio Boulevard. Locating multifamily at this east end, as I said, not only disregards the context and development patterns of the Boulevard, I think you'll hear from others that live within the immediate area, the concerns that that would bring to the area. I will state, Indiana landmarks does not oppose development of this property. Quite frankly, it was inevitable. But it does object to what we consider inappropriate develop, unsympathetic development. Full development as single-family, certainly something that I would hope the developer would consider. Looking at lot sizes, varying those houses, certainly along Ohio Boulevard, reducing the number of lots by half to be more in keeping with that development pattern along Ohio Boulevard. Indiana landmarks, we've been active here in the city for decades now, and it's unfortunate that there seems to be a little bit of a "we'll take what we can get" when it comes to new development. Part of that is there's been an unwillingness to attach expectations and standards and requirements to what is to be developed. Design is not something the city can even consider at this point, but it should be a condition anytime incentives are offered. That should have been a condition when the city applied for and was approved for the RIF funding for this. Pursuing funding opportunities for infrastructure improvement, certainly a smart way to go. Leveraging local dollars and local tax revenue against funding opportunities, it needs to be done, particularly as the mayor said, the city is looking at continued reduction of tax revenue at the local level. It's been mentioned that Demming Park and Ohio Boulevard are two of the gems of the community, valued areas, valued assets, landmarks. But it seems hollow to talk about that and then support a development that has the potential to greatly diminish the integrity and the character of those resources. So I stand in support of all of those who have expressed concern and who will express concern. I ask that the city council take those into consideration as it considers the decision on this, which quite frankly will set a precedent for all of the historic areas in the city, those valued landmarks, those valued areas of the community. Thank you.
The next person who signed up in the hallway is Deborah Considine.
Deborah?
Appreciate that. My name's Deborah Considine. I live at 1625 South 11th Street. I do have a relative who lives at the nearby Holman Meadows. But I was going to say a lot of things, but I did receive some information in a group email about the 2015 proposal to build apartments, and I have a question. On the application information, it has the 601 Fruit Ridge Avenue address, which is one of the two addresses being considered. However, the location says the property is located northwest of the intersection of Poplar Street and Fruit Ridge Avenue, containing 1,840 acres. It has approximately 1,150 feet of range around Poplar Street. So I'm not sure, is there a mistake when they first applied for it, or is there a mistake now? I have it on my cellphone, and I also have, like, the description of the property also, as well, it also mentions Poplar Street.
That was mentioned today.
Mr. Kelly, do you want to look at it?
I don't.
If you can answer that easily.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and address it, Eddie? Please.
So this is a good way to address at least a couple of issues that I know may come up this evening. First of all, that legal description in the original application includes, as was mentioned, probably 1,000 acres, but that accepts out, it was a huge section area. I don't know if you guys probably don't read legal descriptions as much as I do. You start off with a big area, and everything gets whittled down to something smaller. It has nothing to do with anything along Poplar or Fruit Ridge. What was mentioned, what is confusing and I think needs to be addressed, is this 2015 rezoning request that was, ended up being withdrawn before the council, and it did receive an unfavorable recommendation from REAP Plan. That was the Beaumont planned unit development. That was not this parcel. So while those addresses may match up or look the same, it is absolutely not the same piece of property.
Thank you for addressing that. Next, James Kendall. Jimmy, are you in the hallway? Yeah, that's you, Jimmy. Come on in. Welcome.
Hello, James Kendall, Three Jackson Boulevard here in Terre Haute. It's been said that the last sometimes are first, so you get to the city council last, you get to speak one of the first. I know there's a lot of people in this room. There are my neighbors in Edgewood Grove and probably on the east side of Terre Haute. They're probably going to be echoing similar things tonight, you know, just asking the city council to reconsider at least everything. You know, the landmarks individual spoke about the apartments. We recognize that affordable housing and good housing needs to be made in Terre Haute, but with regards to the location on the east side, so close to Demming Park, with regards to the traffic, the wetlands, so on and so forth, we were just asked for reconsideration of location, also reconsideration of maybe the apartments. I'm not sure if, when Demus Demming, you know, gave the land to the city nearly 200 years ago, if the idea of having apartments within a few hundred feet of the opening to the park was in the idea of the family's long-term plan there. So it's something to think about, as obviously the integrity and the character of Ohio Boulevard. Many of us, I think, in this room probably feel that that will be possibly in jeopardy if this goes into fruition as planned right now. Thank you for your consideration.
The next person who signed up is Elizabeth Kendall. Elizabeth, are you ready to come in? I think there might be a broadcast delay out in the hallway.
West Coast. Thirty-second delay.
A thirty-second delay? Okay, yeah.
In case we need censored.
Okay, so Elizabeth is out. The last one from the hallway is Eric Reyes. Welcome, Eric.
Thank you. As it says, I'm Eric. I'm at Hudson Avenue. I had the privilege of coming before you last month and asking if you'd just consider time. I can't imagine what the last month has been like for you. I have tried to digest the amount of information coming through emails and different sources over the last month, and I've been inundated, and so I can't imagine what your life has been like. I do agree with one of the things mentioned earlier, that it should be primarily about facts. So to position this a little bit, I did not, I'm not one of the 1,050 people who signed the petition, much probably to my neighbor's chagrin, because I wanted all of the facts before I made a statement about whether I was for or against, and I wanted to see all the things laid out. And so I'm coming to you tonight trusting that you have seen a lot more than me and are capable of making the decision, but I do have a couple of facts I wanted to address, and then one personal comment, I think. In the traffic study, I really appreciated the depth of the traffic study that was presented last week. As a data person, I actually enjoyed looking through the 17 primary pages and the lots and lots of appendices that were filled with graphics and tables, and the data was really well-laid out, but I disagreed with some of the conclusions, and I wanted to at least question some of them. In particular, the conclusion was that the traffic has remained stagnant or dropped significantly. Of the four stations for which we have historical data that were presented in that report, only one station had a significant drop, and that's the corner of the 25th and Wabash. And for most residents, that is not the primary concern, is 25th and Wabash, it's Ohio and Brown. And if you look at Ohio and Brown and the regions that, everything has remained stagnant. And it was stated even tonight by the lawyers that within the last 10 years, the traffic is the same. 10 years ago, at the one station, we do have data from 10 years ago, that was 2014, during that time, Wabash Avenue was being repaved and resurfaced, so it makes a lot of sense that people would divert from Wabash to Ohio to make that a quick thoroughfare. The traffic on Brown did not change during that timeframe, only on Ohio moving east to west. And so I think there is a logical explanation for why there was an increase there, and I imagine that if you asked residents at the time whether the traffic was normal or whether it was a headache, they would probably have said that was more than what they were used to and more than what the area can afford. I can imagine that some of the decrease in the other areas, most of them are marginal within like a couple of hundred counts, that could easily be explained by the closing of Meadows over the last few years, that removing the staff, the students, and the pickup decreased the traffic in that area. Again, marginally, not substantially, not to account for the 2,000 estimated increased visits per day in that area. I did find it interesting that the traffic study, again, I liked a lot of the ideas about changing the layout of the Brown-Ohio intersection and at Fruit Ridge, and there were two comments in particular that stood out to me. One, that this development would, could have the potential to accentuate some existing problems, acknowledging that there are already problems in that area when it comes to traffic. With regard to Ohio and Brown in particular, I've always thought a roundabout made sense there. I know people in our area hate roundabouts. It always made sense to me. But I was intrigued by the reason for not including it. The report says it was immediately discarded due to size constraints and the impact it would have on the historic look of the Boulevard. If that is a substantial reason to not put in a roundabout, then I would assume that that is a reason that the same body would consider development and what that would look like there. Again, maybe not a personal reason for me, but if that's on the table. With regard, now my, some personal comments. With regard to the Thrive Study, the benchmark for affordability is 30% of your income. So when they quote something like, "How much can you afford on a monthly," or how many, it's 30% of your income. I am fortunate enough to have a very steady job in what's considered a good employment in the city. I would not spend 30% of my income towards my home or my apartment. When I have the privilege of taking potential new hires around the city, they're not looking for apartments, they're looking for rental homes. They want a presence where they can establish that, and we are lacking that in this city. And that is one of my first comments, is that we don't have a thriving rental home community. We do have some great apartments, and let me show you where some of those are. And to my knowledge, they've never struggled to find a place in the area. So it seems that I am one of the demographics that we're trying to attract with this kind of location. Again, higher income, steady employment, and I would not spend the income necessary to afford these homes and/or the apartments that are being proposed. Tonight, you're also going to see an MOU from the city and the developer, which lays out a lot of the agreements, trying to address some of the concerns that have been raised about potential changes or future development. So I appreciate the gesture. I also am not comforted by an agreement that can be changed by a single individual. The mayor is the signatory for representing the entire city. And then clause six or seven point on the MOU is that any changes to this must be agreed upon by all parties in writing. If the one individual is who representing the city, that doesn't alleviate the concerns that I would have. I would want a body of elected officials who represent the full city to be the signatories on such an MOU, not a single individual. So I don't think that some of the data that's been presented represents the target audience that is being claimed. Again, I would not purchase these homes, I would not move these. I purposely purchased a home well within my means, and these homes would be well without of my means. So I wanted to bring some of that for context to you. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Okay, that's the end of the list of folks who signed up outside in the hallway. So what I'm going to do now is open up the microphone to public comment, and feel free to approach and share with us your name and your comments, please.
Yes, thank you, council members. I have four very short questions of information, factual information.
I'm sorry, can you please share your name with us?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. My name is John Maraldo. I live half a block off of Ohio Street on 22nd.
Thank you, John.
The first three questions are for the developer. The last question is for the council members. For the developer, first, has the developing company already purchased the property in question? Second, we have heard several times that this area of our city long ago was intended for residential housing. At that time, was it intended for a very large complex of over 100 apartments and less than 100 single-family homes? Thirdly, when the developing company learned of the opposition to this development, what alternative properties did it look into, and what alternative plans did it consider? Finally, then, to the council members. The planning commissioner, Marcus Maurer, presented a very detailed, very careful list of recommendations to the developer. My question is, if the council approves of the rezoning, what obligation is the developer under to follow those recommendations? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Please, approach. Please, approach.
My name is Adam Munoz, and I reside in Edgewood Grove. The attorney that was up here initially stated that for you guys to focus on the facts and encourage the council to vote based upon those things. So here they are. A city council member is defined as: City Council Members Have Diverse Duties, ranging from legislative responsibilities to representing constituents and overseeing city functions. They are expected to represent the interests of their constituents, meeting with residents to discuss issues and concerns, and providing a voice for the community in council meetings and other public forums. By a show of hands of the council, how many council members have met with any of their constituents or held a forum or public meeting of their own about this topic? I got one, two, three. Okay? How many council members have knocked on doors to hear the concerns and thoughts of their constituents? The moment that every single one of you sitting on this council made the decision to sit in the very seat that you do, you gave up the right and the ability to vote the way that you would want to, because you are now the vote of the constituents that you represent. But the only way that you can arrive at a decision properly is to have all the information, which, by the ones that didn't raise their hands, by not talking to your constituents, you don't have that full information. I have not heard-
Can I interrupt you for just a moment? Hey, can I interrupt you for just a moment, Adam? You presented a pretty limited palette of ways that we might interact with our constituents.
I know that there are other ways, but the ways that that can be done is in a public forum, so that you can be challenged and you can answer questions to a public body, which are constituents of your representation, of who you represent. So by you not holding a public forum, you may get phone calls, you may get emails, but the other portion of your constituents don't know that.
I would just a slight, little bit more pushback. What is this?
This is a city council meeting. This is a duty. Outside of this-
This is a public forum, as was last week's meeting, as was the meeting last month.
May I continue?
At all three of these, we've tried to make it as open and give the public as much opportunity to talk to us as possible.
Okay.
Please, yeah, go ahead and continue. I don't intend to be argumentative, buddy.
And neither do I, only to remind you. I'm not here to tell anyone what to do with their land. However, if exceptions by the city are made in order for this to be done, then full transparency must be given. Have you done a wildlife study and the impact that this development would have on that particular area? I don't know if any of you have driven down Fruit Ridge or gone into In-N-Out or Deming Park. You'll see a lot of geese come through there. You can ask any amount of my neighbors that are in this, in the seating here today. We have deer, all sorts of wildlife that run through our neighborhood that come out of that particular property and that utilize that property. Why would this development not be made farther eastward where the current developments off of Forty-Sixth are being made? There is plenty of land that is also owned by the same owner, where the exceptions by this body would not have to be made. And as a side note, one of those properties owned is also an apartment complex. I would be remiss if I did not remind this council of past items. The area of Twenty-Ninth and Holman, are you guys familiar with that area offhand? Okay. Many years ago, the owner of that particular block, two-block radius, came before this council and asked for exceptions to be made for an apartment complex to which this very council denied. That owner has and is still currently building homes on that property. When Meyer was brought in, this very council advised Meyer that they would extend Hunt Road into the back of Meyer, hence the reason that Meyer has already done their part in doing so. But a couple months ago, $40,000 was allocated to complete a study to see if that was even feasible. Why agree to it if you can't do it? Developers will, and have come, and will tell everyone how great this is and what a wonderful opportunity this development will provide. However, this is not the only place that this development could be done. But they, those developers, some of them, don't live here. They don't represent the area that is impacted. I live here. We live here. And it is our voices that matter. In closing, I will simply state this. The impact of the housing development and apartment complex would severely impact the area in a negative way, and anyone that states otherwise would be wrong. Mr. Dinkle, Ms. Thompson, I do not know you personally, but I think that if either of you have driven through the area of which you represent, you will know very obviously how your constituents feel and expect you to vote on this item before you. And if you vote any other way, it is my opinion, and by the very definition of a city council member, that you have not fulfilled your duties as a representative of your constituents. Thank you for this time to address you.
Thank you, Adam.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of this council. I am Carly Schmidt, and I am a resident of Edgewood Grove. I want to first off, by saying, we very much appreciate all the time that we've been allowed in these public meetings. And as someone who studies representation in my professional capacity, this is exactly what government should be looking like. So thank you. My home is turning 100 years old this year, and my spouse and I have always seen ourselves, not just as homeowners, but as temporary stewards of a home in a historic neighborhood that is connected with the larger history of Terre Haute. It is really a great privilege. I am one who very much values progress, growth, and change, but not at the expense of foregoing our city's treasures. The proposed apartment complex would do just that to historic Ohio Boulevard, a gem of our city. A developer is free to pursue action to develop, but the city must have a broader vision, one that values and protects its treasures and is not shortsighted in its pursuit of development. The historic neighborhood in which the apartment complex in particular would be situated must be a central component in the city's decision-making on this issue. The apartments do not add to our prized Boulevard, but rather very much take away from it. Historic preservation is not merely an emotional response, as we suggested earlier, but it's a value. My spouse and I are transplants. We are the kinds of people that the city wants to recruit and retain. And we choose to live here when many of our colleagues, many, choose not to, and not because of housing concerns. We contribute to the community in the ways that we can, and we want to be a part of a city that shares our values. We've heard that not moving forward with this development would send a message to future developers that the city is not open to development. But from my perspective, not moving forward sends a broader signal about who we are and what we care about. We don't throw away what we say we value. It is uncertain how many homes will actually get built. It seems the price might be a bit uncertain. We heard earlier from a representative from Thrive talking about the need for homes up to the $350,000 level. It was my understanding these were going to be $400,000 homes, as was initially discussed in the redevelopment commission. And as the builder discussed in that initial meeting, they were going to build 10 to 15 homes this fall, and demand would determine how those roll out in the future. So we really don't know how many will get built. But the proposed apartment complex and whatever plans the developer has in mind for the vacant and future development areas in that R3-zoned area will indeed happen. We, as a city, should not endorse this plan. At the last, at the last meeting, there was a rezoning request before this body centering on a daycare. Councilwoman Lauter Milk rightfully and dutifully asked the attorney representing the daycare if the neighbors were okay with the zoning change. We don't need to ask that question tonight. The power and the influence of the developer in our community is lost on no one. We're hearing echoes of it throughout this meeting. My neighbors have done a fantastic job collecting and presenting arguments, data, information, and testimony to provide a more holistic picture of what is on the table. And now we are turning to you as our elected representatives, and ask that you stand with us as residents of these neighborhoods, but also in the interest of the city more broadly, and oppose this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carly. Welcome, Amanda.
Thank you. This is way outside my comfort zone, but I'm going to do it. My name is Amanda Baker. I'm a lifelong resident of Vigo County. I've also in the past moved away and I've come back. I've traveled fairly extensively, and point being, I've chosen this city to be my home. My father was a sheriff's deputy here for many years. My brother is currently on the police department. My grandparents' names are painted on the shamrock every year at the intersection of Nineteenth and Poplar. Again, I only mention these things to state that my family spent many years contributing, serving, and caring for this community. I'm not sure if many of you have noticed me, I've been kind of in the audience at all the other meetings with a very, very patient, well-behaved child. She's not here tonight because she is participating in the Kids Running Club at Deming Park as we speak. She's there with the Wabash Valley Road Runners, one of the many groups in our community that utilize the area, both the park and the Boulevard, to offer programs and events, often free, that benefit and are open to the entire community, not just the Eastsiders. I can send her there tonight while I come here, because I know she's safe and in a peaceful area of our town. She's with community members that care for her. We all know that the property will be developed. We are simply asking that it's developed in a manner, responsible manner that respects the area. The east end of Ohio Boulevard leading into Deming Park is certainly one of the most beautiful green spaces that we have within our city limits, and I don't think anybody has argued that. Maintaining the integrity of the historic area is vital for our entire community. We've heard from many that they use this area to help recruit future employers and residents due to its beauty and historic nature. Visionary leadership looks far into the future, rather than just a few years at a time. True vision and responsible development involves making hard decisions. Modern and forward-thinking city planning should include maintaining the beautiful areas that already exist while lifting up the areas that need revitalization. This project would be welcome in many, many other areas of town. Preserving the green spaces available to us is vital to attracting employers. Quality of life issues such as access to green spaces, recreational areas, clean air, clean water, ease of navigating through town, and more are all essential to recruiting future employers and residents. When we chip away at the few areas like this that we have to offer, we are harming our community. We are adding houses, yes, but we are subtracting from the reasons to come and live in them. The issue of rezoning is not just of concern to those who live nearby. This issue affects the entire community. The TIF or RIF was applied for without proper zoning in place for the development that was proposed. That has created this sense of urgency to push the rezoning through without giving the full opportunity to truly vet this development. And I know, yes, there has been multiple public meetings. We've all sent emails. Most of us have gotten responses from all of you, especially the mayor. It's fully appreciated. But I feel that there's still incomplete information. For example, the traffic study, has it been independently reviewed yet? I know at one point it was mentioned that it would be. Has it been modified in any way to include the Hudson intersection? Has there been an environmental impact study done? Have we looked into the issue of the fact that it's a wetland? So there are still many questions to be answered. We've been asked many times, what message does this send to future developers if we vote against rezoning? In my opinion, the message that it sends is that we, as a community, demand and require responsible development that takes into account our historic areas, our green spaces, and the integrity of our existing neighborhoods. Those of us who oppose this rezoning are not afraid of change. We're not lacking vision, fearing progress, disparaging of renters, or any of the other number of things said. In fact, it's quite the opposite. We love our community. We care about our town. We want to see it thrive and grow and be beautiful and be proud of it, which is exactly why we oppose it. Visionary development respects and preserves and does no harm to the areas and amenities that are already existing, while revitalizing and expanding on the areas that need it. Responsible and thoughtful development attracts employers and residents both. We all have a stake in the future of our community. We want to see our parks and historic areas properly cared for and maintained. That being said, thank you for listening, and please vote to not rezone.
Welcome. Kathy Taylor, lifelong resident of the Eastside. I have a little question. How many of you here are now or have at some point in your lives been renters? Show of hands. That's what I figured. I just kind of wanted to contend that most of us here are not in opposition of renters, per se, or rental units. It's part of most of our lives. It's a life choice. We are here in opposition, however, because we're concerned with preserving something unique to Terre Haute. It's been called the gem. It's a treasure. We want to preserve that. Not many cities have an Ohio Boulevard residential area or historic area like Edgewood Grove. There are some similar areas throughout our state that remain unsullied by new housing, mass developments, such as what is being proposed. For example, in Fort Wayne, both the West Central Historic District, which represents nearly every architectural style that was popular between 1840, 1960, and the Forest Park Historical District, which represents architectural styles popular from the 1920s through the 1950s. Here you can find examples of craftsmen bungalows, colonial revivals, Tudor cottages, post-war, World War II contemporary homes. Sound familiar? This district is very much like what we have in both Edgewood Grove and Ohio Boulevard. Ohio Boulevard was part of the city beautiful movement and was described as an ideal place to live away from the hustle and bustle of the downtown. The proximity of Forest Park in Fort Wayne with areas of open green space attracted many families and locals of all ages, and this description could also be applied to Edgewood Grove and the historic Ohio Boulevard. In Fort Wayne, the character of these and other historical districts has been carefully guarded and preserved, and we ask that you do the same for our historic neighborhoods. In Indianapolis, I'm sure you're all familiar with the beautiful North Meridian Street Historic District. And in the early 1970s, commercial development threatened residents of that area, but the residents united and eventually took legal action to preserve and protect that area. The character of other historic Indianapolis areas such as Woodruff Place of Booth-Tarkington fame have been carefully guarded from developments that have encroached around them. In Evansville, the Historic Preservation Commission seeks to preserve and enhance the city's distinct aesthetic that serves as a reminder of the city's history. Any changes should preserve the essential qualities of the area. I think that everyone here wants Terre Haute to grow and prosper, but at what cost? I urge you not to be persuaded by TIF money and slick, somewhat deceptive presentations, but to think about what will be lost forever, forever altered by your decisions. To quote Mark 8:36, "For what shall it profit a man if he gains the whole world and loses his own soul?" Let us not forfeit the soul of Terre Haute.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Kathy.
Good evening. My name is Susan Gore, and I live at 365 Sheen Court. We live at the corner of Fruit Ridge and Ohio Street. What we're all concerned about is, you were talking about the traffic study. Well, I was there when they did the traffic study. We live right there on the corner, so I can see everything that's going on, and they were there between 7:30 and 8:30 a.m. Most of the traffic is between 6:00, 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., when everyone's going to work and going to school. And I went out there and I talked to the young man with the Department of Engineering, and I said, "Why are you here this late?" He said, "Well, this is when they told me to come." And I said, "Well, you know, you really need to come earlier." And he said, he didn't have an answer to that. But my point is, is when you were doing the traffic study, it was between 7:30 and 8:30 a.m., and by then, most people are already at work or at school. The second point I want to make is the railroad tracks. There's five trains, an average of five trains that come through every day on that railroad track. And when the trains come through, the traffic backs up all the way to East Wabash Avenue and Poplar Street, as well as down to Brown Avenue, and it's bumper to bumper. As well as on rush hour between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., the traffic is backed up. It's all backed up right in front of our house. We can see it all the way to Brown Avenue, all the way down to Poplar and down to Wabash. And then you have the special events that have, like the Easter egg hunt, you've got Christmas in the park, and again, the traffic is horrendous. I don't know how, with your traffic study, that you think that you're going to be able to handle an additional 900 people in that area when it's already backed up with traffic already. And people, when they cross the street on Ohio and Fruit Ridge Avenue, it's at your own risk many times. My husband and I, we walk daily, as many of our neighbors and people in the community, and it's very dangerous to walk across Ohio Boulevard and Fruit Ridge Avenue. And I'm not just talking about us. I'm talking about all the children, the older people, the bicyclists, the walkers, the runners. I mean, you have to be very careful. Sometimes it takes them 15 minutes to cross that corner. So my question to you is, how do you think that you're going to be able to handle an additional 900 people in that section? Aren't you concerned about accidents? How, the people, the traffic backing up? How are you going to handle it when it's already backed up already? And then another thing that I want to talk about is the fire department and the paramedics, and we appreciate each and every one of you. You guys do a fantastic job. And I go there monthly and bring treats and talk to the firemen. They all know me. And I do that because I, it's from my heart. We appreciate what they do because it's a lot of hard work and they're risking their lives every day. But, you know, so again, they're busy all the time. Those sirens are going off all the time. The ambulances, the paramedics, you know, and also they're, what I understand is they're one of the backups for all the fire departments. When there's a fire and they need more help, they bring out the Fruit Ridge Avenue firefighters out to that fire or emergency if they need more help. So again, how are they going to handle another 900 people in that area when they're already And the last point I want to make is, my husband and I built our home there four and a half years ago, and this is our retirement home. We've always wanted to live on Ohio Boulevard. And we moved there and we built a home there because it was quiet, it was peaceful, just a wonderful place to live. You know, we love looking out at Deming Park and just enjoying the environment. And then all of a sudden, you know, we have a developer that is going to build 93 cookie-cutter homes with, say, an average of at least three people in those homes, and then you're going to put 173 apartments. And yes, I understand that you're saying that those apartments are going to be between $1,500 and $2,000. Honestly, how many people in this room would be able to afford $1,500 to $2,000 a month to pay for an apartment? And also, the other point I want to make is, on those apartments, the way a lot of those people are affording those in these other apartment areas is there might be three or four people in an apartment, like the Rose Holman students, the ISU students, St. Mary of the Woods, they're sharing those apartments. So you're not having one or two people in those apartments. You might be having four, which, again, it increases the traffic in that area. And my question to all of you is, how do you think that all of you are going to handle all that additional traffic and justify that development with those 93 cookie-cutter homes and 173 three-story, 11-units in the east end of Ohio Boulevard, Brown Avenue, and Fruit Ridge Avenue and Poplar Street? That's my question to all of you. How do you really think that you're going to be able to handle all that? That's all I want to talk about.
I see Jerry Varner in the back, and Jerry stood and tried to approach a couple times. Let's let her go after you. Welcome.
Now?
Yeah.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Jay Detzel. I live at 10 Berkeley in Woodridge subdivision. I have two or three things I wanted to touch on tonight, but I want to follow up on this lady's comments about the traffic study. And some of you were on the council three, four years ago when there was a proposed project on the corner of Wabash and Keene Lane. Did a traffic study on that, too. I know President Nation was on that committee, was on the council then. And I rose to speak against that because the traffic study didn't agree with reality. I live on the corner of Keene Lane and Berkeley. It's right across the street from the Calvary Cemetery. I've lived there for 35 years. I've watched traffic on Keene Lane go up and down the wrong way on Keene Lane multiple times. You probably recall me bringing that up.
I do.
And the traffic study did not mention any of that. And I'm thinking, what she said about the way this one was conducted, and now I'm asked to believe that this particular traffic study is more accurate than last time I had to deal with this. I really don't know if there's any alternative to personal firsthand, on-the-spot, eyes-on-the-ball evaluation. And I know when you do traffic studies, you can't send people out there to sit all day long in all the different times of day and watch the traffic through rush hours and intersections, but the reality is, those traffic studies are not often accurate. Also, to agree with the foot traffic and the bike traffic on Ohio Boulevard, my wife and I ride Ohio Boulevard through Deming Park on our bikes probably three times a week. It's treacherous at times to ride that bike path. In fact, she refuses to ride the bike path. She's on the sidewalk, so I'm out there waiting for the cars to come. People on their phones, and it was noted at the last meeting last week, there are speeders. Somebody rolled past us on Saturday. They must have been going 60 miles an hour. It's treacherous. It really, truly is. And the bike paths on South 9th Street also the same way. I don't think drivers really care much for people riding bicycles. We annoy them. Why are they here? Are any of you cyclists on the council? You know what I mean. Have you ever found yourself riding down a street and traffic breaks someone wants to enter from a side street, and now's their big opportunity? Oh, here comes that guy on a bike. And they'll try to beat you before you get there. Now, I bring this up simply because we're talking about a significant increase in traffic out there. I'm not promoting bicycle trails or narrower lanes. Have any of you ever driven? Well, I know you have. Silly question. You've all driven State Road 42 East. How wide are those lanes? They're about as narrow as you can get for a state highway. Have you ever noticed how fast people travel there? I think the traffic study suggested narrower lanes on Ohio Boulevard would decrease the speed. I don't think that'll probably bring reality to the picture. Enough of the traffic study. My next question I have, I would like to ask either Mr. Coystra or Mr. Felling, which part of the projects are going to be built first? The apartments will start construction first, or will it be the single-family dwellings?
Simultaneous.
Simultaneous. Okay. Is there, is there any requirement that you have to build single-family dwellings? Let me answer that question if you would. Is it required, single-family dwellings must be constructed there?
You know, Jay...
I can't ask them.
Well, you can.
Okay.
But they can also refuse to answer.
Okay.
And we can ask them to.
Okay.
I will give Brian or Eddie the opportunity to do this, but really, you're addressing the council and other members of the audience.
I kind of thought that was the case, but I was going to try and do it anyway.
Eddie, do you want to go ahead and respond?
I can address both of those.
Thanks.
Again, and I'm taking notes in the back, so after this one, unless council wants me to answer something right away, we'll get it answered when it's appropriate. The answer is, no, you wouldn't have to build single-family houses, and you wouldn't have to build apartments either. They could leave it vacant.
Okay.
So just rezoning...
Is it possible that you could expand the apartment area to go west where the parcels are now noted for single-family dwellings?
Yes.
So the apartments could become an entire complex?
Yep, and this council would have to vote for that. And you'd have the opportunity to come back again. But that's not the plan.
Thanks, Eddie. Well, you see where I'm going with that. I want to make sure that this is not going to turn into a huge apartment development, and if that is possible, which it seems by his answer that it is, I would hope the council would address that issue and place some stipulation that that's the way this is supposed to go.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
To be clear, there are, what we're talking about now is a request to rezone the eastern part of the parcel.
Exactly.
R3 for multifamily.
Okay.
And what I understood Eddie to explain is that if the developer were to decide that they wanted to develop the western part, or any part of the western part, has also R3, then they would need to go through the rezoning process again.
Okay.
So in that sense, yes, it's possible, in the same way that anything is possible in the world of development. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I just wanted to make sure we had that on the record, that that possibility exists, because I'm afraid some people in the audience might think it's half this and half that, and so at least we know there's flexibility there.
Well, if I may, just a little more.
Yes, sir.
The representation that's been made in the context of the other two things that we'll be discussing, the TIF district and the residential TIF district.
Right.
The representation that's been made is that it would, that those would need to be developed for this to work, and that they would need to hew to, from the state's perspective, hew to the representations that they've made. The 94 houses, the attendant roads and infrastructure. That is what they've consistently said in these meetings. Eddie, would you like to make that clear?
I was being overly broad. I apologize when I said, in theory, they wouldn't have to build anything, or they could come back and ask for rezoning. So in a typical rezoning, somebody rezones something and they say they're going to do something, they don't have to do that thing. Okay? I want to make sure everybody's clear about that. That's the important piece of this puzzle that we proposed last week, and we've since committed to and executed, the memorandum of understanding with the mayor, that says we will, if this resolution, if this is passed, the rezoning's passed and the TIF district is passed, we will build the project we presented. So if this passes, we will build it. Under normal circumstances, we aren't bound by that requirement, but the MOU contractually binds us to the project we presented.
And this is, if you stay for just a minute, this is the first mention of the MOU having actually been written and actually been presented and actually been signed on behalf of the city by our mayor. So thank you for bringing that to light, Eddie, because this is, I think it helps address some of the concerns that people have.
Would you like me to briefly highlight what's in that document if people haven't seen it?
I think this is probably a good time to do that, since I suspect that no members of the public have seen it, even though the members of the council have.
Hopefully, they have. I think it's posted to the website.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm probably not given...
So hopefully, at least some people have. But if I could just briefly highlight what the document is and what it means, it's what we call an MOU, memorandum of understanding. It's a contractual obligation between the landowner, both the single-family and multifamily developer, and Mayor Sacman on behalf of the city of Terre Haute. The primary points are this. If this passes this evening, both this and the TIF district, the creation of a TIF district, the developer will create the project as it's been presented. They will not make any changes to the roads or the roadways that have been presented. So that creates certain restrictions on what they can do from that standpoint. They will, the developer is committed to putting in sidewalks along Ohio Boulevard and Brown Avenue. The developer will also dedicate an easement for a trail along the northern and eastern portion of the development so that we can link that whole entire portion of both this development and Edgewood Grove to Deming Park. And the developers and landowners have agreed to abide by any and all other zoning requirements and rules, including variances, setbacks. We also included environmental concerns in there with regard to wetlands. I think that highlights all the major points. So to be clear, if this passes this evening, and any one of those things would not happen, the city has the opportunity through its city attorney or any other third-party legal counsel to file a lawsuit against the developer and the landowner to issue what's called an injunction to stop them from doing anything that they've agreed, that they aren't doing that they've agreed to in that agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. And Jay, I'm sorry to have interrupted you, but please, carry on.
And I'm glad we took that moment, because I think that provides information to a lot of us. Last couple requests to the council. This may seem a little out of normal meeting procedure. All of your constituents, obviously, are not here, but we have everybody we can get in the room. I think they would appreciate, rather than wait until the time for a vote, maybe it would be, I'm not asking you to reveal how you each plan to vote, but I would love to hear from each one of you just one reason why you think you should support this, and one reason why you think you would oppose it. So that way, when the vote's taken, we already have a feel for why each one of you did what you did.
Jay, there will be an opportunity for each council person to speak on this.
Okay.
I could ask them to do that now.
Okay.
We can all, like, be contemplating that.
My last request is, when you call for a vote, could you do it by roll call so we can hear each individual vote?
There will be someone who will request a roll call vote, I'm sure.
Thank you very much. Thanks to the members of the council. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jay. Jerry, it's your turn. Please, Jerry, it's your turn. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Varner, and I have been a Hoshian forever. I am a passionate Terre Haute person, and I love the city. I love the people, and I love the passion of the people here and what they are trying to do. But I want them to keep an open mind as to maybe there is something here... as to maybe there is something here worth talking about than throwing it out. I have watched that property for many years, wondering where, what would happen to it. And there have been other proposals, but they got taken down because they were found to be developers that really didn't present a good picture of, of what was wanted here. And we've had problems in the city because we had very weak zoning laws, and developers would come in and they'd say they would do one thing, and then they would do another, and there was nothing to stop them. There are, of course, some local developers who might operate in the same way, but it's called taking the money and run. The current proposal is from a man I trust. He has stayed in our community with his family and provided us with the number one cross-country destination, a great convention center, a beautiful hospice for our families, hotels, the Larry Bird Museum, and many other projects in our community. I love Ohio Boulevard, and because I trust Greg Gibson, I know he will not disappoint. He does not want something crackerbox. He knows. He knows how important this property is. But he also saw it as an opportunity to provide necessary housing for our community. The apartments won't be on the sidewalk, and he will have beautiful landscaping. The houses on some of the Boulevard have large yards. In other, in other areas, they're very small yards, and some are very close together. People on Ohio Boulevard who want it to be beautiful should also consider some of the housing that needs more love. They are a part of our Boulevard as well. We need to consider who will be buying and renting in this area. Many of these people moving into the area will be younger families, and young ones starting out on a career. They do not have time for big yards, nor the money to pay for professional care. Those who have children have no time at all for a big yard, and older people will be looking at this because they can no longer handle their big yard and their big house. As for the traffic issue, I believe this is an issue Terre Haute has not dealt with in many years. We have Wabash, we have Poplar. Those streets are the biggies, and of course, they are using Ohio Boulevard. But saying we are not going to house more people is not a solution to our problem. Edgewood Grove has apartments. Terra Vista has apartments. Village Quarter has apartments. I think, well done, we are not going to disparage the glory of our Ohio Boulevard. Greg Gibson knows that he has his name on this development. This is a family who have stayed here when they could have gone anywhere in the world. They love this community. And I thank Greg for stepping forward, as difficult as it is, and for taking this responsibility. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jill. Who's next? There was someone who was trying to approach. Thank you. Yeah. Welcome.
We have to stop meeting like this. This is my eighth meeting. My name is Susan Beeson. I live on Ohio Boulevard. And just to keep it as brief as possible, ditto, 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 ditto. I am against the rezoning, and I think that many people have spoken beautifully. Secondly, I would like to address Mr. Dinkle. Mr. Dinkle, you came to my home for our very first meeting. We had about 40 or 50 people there, and I hope that you were pleasantly welcomed. I would hate to think that we did anything other than that in my home. My home is open to everyone, and I want to thank you for your time that you spent with us.
Absolutely.
So I wanted to make sure we do that. Just a couple points. I live right across the street from where these homes are going to be built, and I was thinking about the homes finished. But then it dawned on me one day, I thought, well, wait a minute. It's going to take three to five years for this development to develop. We're going to, first of all, they're going to fell all the trees, we're going to have dirt, we're going to have dust, we're going to have trucks and, and new infrastructure built. And so, that in itself is going to change the landscape and the desirability of Ohio Bill, of Ohio Boulevard, because it will take so long for this to occur. That's one point. Again, on the traffic study, there are 2,066 proposed vehicular trips in addition, once this development is built. And I can't imagine that 2,066 trips will not impact the area. I mean, I'm not a traffic czar, but to me, that seems a little strange. Regarding the apartments, we are for development, but we want single-family housing, and build single-family housing from Brown to Fruit Ridge. Make it beautiful, make it have nice streets, whatever. But I was thinking about the apartments, and they're going to be 11 three-story buildings, camouflaged by intentional landscaping. That's what the builders are willing to do. And they will be separated from the surrounding neighborhood. They will not be an integral part of the residential and environmental profile, because they are intentionally being separated and camouflaged. The people who live there will be private to those apartments, but they will impact the rest of the neighborhood. We will not have access to those apartments, which is fine. Well, you can't play on the pickleball courts and we won't be able to swim. So they'll be their own little entity, sort of a microcosm of society on Ohio Boulevard. Well, to me, that defeats the whole purpose of a neighborhood. We have a neighborhood now. We go from 19th Street all the way down to Fruit Ridge. They're going to be taking a huge chunk of this neighborhood out for the apartments, and they, they just won't be part of the neighborhood. I mean, it's unfortunate, but they probably won't. And it doesn't mean they're bad people at all. It's just the fact of the matter. One other comment that I have, Mr. Coystra was quoted as saying that this development is a risk, and he's willing to take the risk. He's confident. Well, I love Ohio Boulevard, just like many people here do. I'm not willing to take a risk on Ohio Boulevard. Let's build houses. Let's build them from Brown to Fruit Ridge, and let us not rezon for apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Please, approach. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Hayden France. I'm 26 years old, and I stand before you not just as a resident of Terre Haute, but as someone who's deeply invested in its past, its present, and its future. I currently live on the east side of town, walkable to Basler's. Before that, I lived in a duplex built in 1908 that I purchased in the historic Farringtons Grove District. It's on Strawberry Hill, close to where the Coats Women College is. If you know, you know. It's rumored, it's rumored that Frederick Douglass had stepped foot in my house. So I, I understand the value of preserving what makes our neighborhoods so special. But I also understand what it means to try to build a life here as a young professional, and how incredibly difficult that can be with the limited housing options we currently have. When I purchased my most recent home, I had to completely renovate it. A new foundation wall, new kitchen, bathroom, living room, all just to make it livable. I took that on because I love this city, and I believe in this side of town. But most people in my shoes won't or can't do that. They will leave, and many already have. That's why I support the rezoning and development along Ohio Boulevard. It's not a threat to the east side, it's an opportunity. An opportunity to bring new life, new energy, and new residents to a part of Terre Haute that deserves smart, intentional growth. I'm involved in numerous organizations that work to make Terre Haute better, and I've seen many councilmen represent the same groups. I also created a group I call Pines and Properties, where I meet monthly to educate and empower residents to invest right here in our city. I hear the same thing again and again. We need quality housing, especially for young professionals who want to stay here after college, but can't find a place that fits their lifestyle or their needs. This development can change that. This development is walkable to Basler's Market, to the Farmer's Market, to Demming Park, and all the other places that I visit weekly. When my family comes to visit, we meet, meet at local parks for picnics. This development gives the future residents the same access to what makes this side of town so special. Connection, community, and quality of life. And I know there are concerns, but the data is clear. Thorough traffic studies show that this project won't create congestion. Also, studies show that multifamily developments are often safer. More eyes on the street, more consistent upkeep, and more neighborhood presence. We have four colleges in Terre Haute, and yet, we lose so many of our best and brightest, because they don't see a future for themselves here. This project helps change that narrative. It gives them and others a reason to stay, a reason to build their lives here, a reason to invest here. This isn't about disrupting a historic corridor. It's about writing the next chapter in that corridor story, one where families, graduates, and professionals can plant roots without having to leave town, just to find housing that works. Let's be a city that grows with intention, welcomes progress, and creates room for the next generation. Council, I respectfully urge you to support this rezoning and help us move Terre Haute forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Hayden. Please.
Good evening. Here we are again. I've attended seven public meetings. I've attended two private meetings. I've had councilmen come to my home. Thank you, Mr. DeBon. I've met with Mr. Dinkle as well.
Mrs. Isaiah, could you please introduce yourself?
I'm Heidi Isaiah, and I live in Edgewood Grove. I apologize for that. Okay, I would also like to speak on fact, primarily because we were told we talk about our feelings, although Mr. Felling did, in fact, bring up his children and the building being closed. But I'm not sure how that was brought to light, considering the school corporation is currently, right now, while we're here, having their very first listening session with the community. Anyway, that being said, rezoning to an R3 will alter the existing neighborhood. That's been said before, and that is factual. School buildings that are structurally failing and in imminent need of repair are not an attractive draw. I emailed each of you, housing developments that are currently underway, Fruit Ridge and Holman, down further on Holman, 20th and Davis. There was published in the paper, I think, yesterday or the day previous, at the police station, it was even mentioned this evening, the 111 apartments going down on Third Avenue. Those are all facts. Filing of the paperwork for this project was filed on December 13th of 24. They waited to announce this proposal and are pressuring you with a July 1st deadline. Have you gotten an answer reasonable to the public as to why they waited so long to let you in the loop? Is it really July 1st deadline? Or is that because of the quarterly reset interest rates? Where's the transparency? In an email from Sherri Seaworth, who is the program director for the Residential Housing Infrastructure Assistance Program, she said, quote, "What I have said to current round awardees is that we would like to have a pre-closing scheduled by August." I sent that email out to you as well. Not July. "The application processed was submitted without the rezoning being completed." That's fact. It is as if they thought it was a slam dunk, and they got the, since they got the money, you guys are going to have to agree to it. The amount, since the money was awarded, and they felt you had no choice but to rezon. You do have a choice. You know, the old adage, they put the cart before the horse. Why did they not file for rezoning prior to applying for the zone, for the loan? That should have been done first, to know if they could even do this project. But they wanted to use that money against you as leverage. And just as a side note, this project does not create jobs. Why did they apply for a loan not, without knowing if they could actually fulfill their proposal? Now they're putting you in a position to vote quickly without all the facts and data, because they're in a hurry to wrap this up. Their emergency is not yours. What will show the commu, what will that show? If you guys vote just haphazardly without the data, you've been told this, oh, wait, that picture's old, oh, what's that future development going to be? Well, we were kicking around at the office that we might possibly put in condos, or... Why are they not sharing all of this upfront? If you cram in all the information, the city council has to vote blindly. That might not sit well with your constituents moving forward. Have you seen a tax study yet? In June of 2015, the recommendation was unfavorable on an R3 zone. Okay, they were talking about it on the other side of Poplar this evening. But that particular document is very relevant for what we're talking about. The reasons given by area planning on that particular document that was shown unfavorable. One, adjacent uses are all single-family or legal non-conforming while still remaining R1. This development is in no way keeping with the surrounding uses. Two, it is clear that the proposed use will adversely affect the use and potential value of other property in the immediate area in a substantially adverse manner. Three, this rezoning does provide unjustified special treatment that benefits a particular owner, while undermining the pre-existing rights and uses of adjacent property owners. It is not consistent with and does not further the purposes of the general area for this. The recommendation was, again, staff offers an unfavorable recommendation on the R3 rezoning. This is in the same area. Nothing in this property has changed since this document, the barrier went through. Nothing's changed, with exception of the owner. The current proposal does not reflect the historic nature of the area. the historic nature of the area. The proposal will alter the existing neighborhood. Again, your constituents are sitting in front of you asking for you to represent us and support your opposition to the R3 zoning. Vote no to rezone R3. Keep it zoned R1 to fit the historical decor of Ohio Boulevard and Edgewood Grove. This will forever alter the existing neighborhood. I had a couple other points I wanted to bring up after people had spoke. I have a question about the memorandum. So I want to clarify on record that, in fact, it is legal and binding. Is it legal and binding? That's my question.
We can ask that, or Eddie can come up and give us assurances.
I was city attorney for nine years. We do MOUs frequently. I can't tell you how many I did with Mayor Bennett. This came up as a, in an effort to contractually bind the developers with the city. So my answer would be, not only, I understand I'm here representing the developer and the landowner tonight, but I can't tell you how many I've done sitting in Mr. Wright's seat as well. It's a common tool that is enforceable. It is a contract.
Well, isn't that reassuring that all the city needs to do is file a lawsuit if it doesn't go the way that they're intending it to? That's really reassuring. Let's spend more tax dollar money on that one. One other final thing I would like to interject. Somebody had made mention this evening about people coming in, and they don't have money for lawn service. I find that an interesting statement, but they do have money for nearing a $2,000 rental property or a $400,000 home. Thank you for your time. I hope you vote no.
I'm Craig Fox. I live on Woodbine in Woodbridge. I have given you all a couple of handouts, which I hope you will read carefully. I'm not going to talk about those particularly right now. I had one other thing to bring up, and that was the houses that are actually being proposed to be built and the prices. One of the best ways to determine what kind of demand there is for real estate is how fast does a neighborhood sell? How long does it take to go from listing a house on the market to the sale? For Holman Meadows, that's between zero and six days. That's how fast they sell. That's what the demand is. The average demand for the city is 41 days. Some places, say, 49. The average for new construction is 41. I think it's pretty clear that the demand is for houses like those of Holman Meadows. Smaller houses with nice lots, with big yards, 1,500 square feet or so. And then I think that the best solution to this whole thing is to leave Ohio Boulevard alone. Let them build houses on that, on there that are, on lots that are between 100 and 120 feet wide, like every other house on Ohio Boulevard. Let the houses in the back parts, the northern sections, be on lots that are about 75 feet wide by about 120 feet deep, which is what Holman Meadows is, which is also about the same as Edgewood Grove. That's what the neighborhood justifies and pays for. That would supply about 50 houses. And that would keep the density levels the same as already exist in the neighborhood. The developer would still make a nice profit. The developer bought this property knowing it was R1, knew from the beginning that this was designed for single-family homes, and what the homes in the neighborhood were. I don't think that, I feel sorry for him if he can't make an extra couple million or something because he's cramming more houses into smaller lots and so forth. The way this plan is set up right now, the backyard of every house is a driveway. There's almost no grass behind any house. They all are driveways back to an alleyway access. There's no parking for visitors. There's no parking for the general public. When they come to that, if you have a, if you only have 66 feet of lot width, that's three cars maximum, and half of that space is taken up by a three-car driveway. So I think that this is just overcrowding beyond any reasonable amount for that part of town. Terre Haute is surrounded by flatland without historic trees that don't have to be bulldozed in order to build houses. I don't think they have, my understanding is that the wetlands still will require application and clearance because they plan to bulldoze all of those wetlands. That's almost half of the acreage of this property. And that's, you know, there's only about 25 acres left that don't have to be, that are not woodland, or wetlands, I'm sorry. So I think it's important that we look at those factors, and I would appreciate it if you vote no. Thank you.
Welcome.
My name's Kevin Barr. As you probably already know, I live in Edgewood Grove. And this is, somebody suggested we mention how many meetings we've been to. I think we've been, I've been to eight, maybe nine if we count the mayor. I don't know if we're counting. Counting, yeah, that was the very first meeting we had. But anyway, first of all, I felt bad for you guys because I felt like you got beat up a little bit. And I wanted to say that my opinion is you guys have been wonderful about listening last week, last time we met, and this time. And we've had good representatives. We've had Mr. DeBon and Mr. Dinkle come out to the neighborhood and meet with us. It was very pleasant yesterday. We were under a shade tree. And then Mrs. Thompson, and Ms. Thompson's been good about approaching us and discussing things with us, too. So anyway, I just wanted to say that I felt you guys have been really good about listening. You guys might talk to the development council, though. Those guys don't smile. They just don't smile. But anyway, I'm going to kind of tie into some things I've heard. I heard the question, what message does this send? And this kind of ties in with what Heidi said. I think Heidi should be an attorney, actually. But anyway, the question was, what message does this send to the developers? I'm sitting there thinking, what message does this send to you guys? I mean, and this is, this is a point that Heidi made. We saw that the document for the RIF was December 13 of 2024. Our understanding is that you guys didn't know anything about it till maybe a month ago. And I don't think, you know, and then you've been given a deadline. And if I was on the council, I wouldn't appreciate that too much. But anyway, I just thought I'd mention that. I've heard in the meetings that I've attended, twice at least, where it was said that the state is anxious, it's a new program with the RIF, and they're anxious to disperse the money. And I'm thinking that the state, I'm sure that's true. But I'm sure, I'm pretty sure that the state doesn't care where the development is. You know, if you were to take that development and put it out by, you know, 46 or somewhere else, the same development, I don't think the state would care, and I think they would award the RIF money. So that's one point that I'd like to make. The only other thing, really, that I have to say is that, of course, as you know, we have the petition. And I think about 12:30 this afternoon, you guys got another email on the petition. And we have, of course, well, I had to turn off my cellphone so I didn't get to check the latest number. But I believe we are at 1,055 people. 1,055 people who are familiar with Ohio Boulevard, who felt strongly enough to go on to the internet and go into the petition and register and make the petition, as you know, make suggestions for improvements. I do know that I've had a number of emails from people that have signed the petition, and they want to know how everybody votes. And I've had some suggestions that the system be set up to remind everybody how everybody on the council votes in the future when it's maybe appropriate. So anyway, but hopefully, hopefully you'll not vote for the rezoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Before Mr. Maralda goes for a second time, is there anyone who hasn't gone for a first time who would like to approach the council? Please, Vinnie, welcome back.
My name is Vinnie Isaiah. I live in Edgewood Grove on Hudson Avenue. I have been to all the public meetings so far, some of the private ones as well. I'm going to try to say some things that haven't been said yet. So I might also go quicker than I'm planning because I have to go to the bathroom. Okay. First thing to mention is, from a boots-on-the-ground point of view, I have worked at both ISU and Rose, and I have yet to hear a professor say, "I am leaving Terre Haute because I can't find a house." They have left for a lot of different reasons. And I can tell you the ISU people are leaving because the salary is too low. Rose people have different reasons for leaving, but that is the reason people leave ISU, at least the ones I've had contact with. And that's a total of seven so far. Okay, population decline. You guys hit 60,000. I have to say that because I'm a transplant. I'm not from here. I didn't come here until 2010. Feel free to hold that against me. 1910, you guys hit the 60,000 mark. And while you've bounced a little below, you haven't really dropped below 60,000 since that point. However, you've had some big population changes. From 1910 to 1960, that 60,000 jumped up to 72,500 people. It then promptly dropped from the 60s to the 90s to 57,500. That's 15,000 people that you lost in a 30-year period. That's like the 500 you're losing now for a 30-year period. That's a very drastic change. Compare that to the population change you're seeing now. It's a drop in the bucket. You guys have hovered around that 60,000 mark. You've now dropped below. Pandemic certainly didn't help things, but you guys are sort of hitting that steady state that you had earlier. But the population drop that you've seen recently is nothing compared to the population drop that you've seen before. Okay. A neighbor of mine had sent an email out to you that you may have read or not read, but he didn't want to come up and speak, so I'm just going to speak the point for him. And it has to do with the sewers. It's known that there's, it's a well-known fact. In fact, it was addressed by the city engineer when my neighbor asked him about that at the Clabber Girl meeting, about whether there's a problem with the storm, with the drainage. And every time there's a storm, Thompson ditch, along with other storm drains, overflow. And you now have sewage, which doesn't necessarily mean fecal matter. It's just any discharge from your house. But that sewage is now floating around where people can run into it. His complaint was when he rides his bike, gets splashed by cars. He's also noticed kids who have played in those pools. I have yet to hear anybody say anything at all about how that sewer problem is going to be rectified. I took a look at the, sorry, what's the acronym? It's NAR, National Association for Realtors. This is a statement from their chief economist. At this critical stage, sorry, I apologize for sentence, despite an increase in housing inventory, we are not seeing higher home sales. Why is that? It's not because the houses are not being built. At this critical stage, it is all about the mortgage rates. That's what's stopping people from entering the houses. Has the mortgage rate issue, has that been addressed anywhere along the way? No. You might build them. They might not come, from that point of view. I also looked at an Indiana real estate, and I have it written down, but I forgot to bring it with me. If anybody has questions, I could be more than willing to tell you what the website is, but I have to go home to check it. But their statement was that the booming part of the housing sales that are occurring in Indiana are pre-war homes, not new builds. Those are the ones that are selling like hotcakes across Indiana. A couple of things that were said by the group that spoke right after Mr. Felling had spoken the very first time. I believe it was the Vigo County Commissioner, Mark Kleikenbeard. I don't remember his exact phrasing, but I do know that a rebuttal to his statement is, these houses and apartments, more to the point, can all be done on 46. And as I understand it, the only argument for not putting them on 46 was that the businesses wanted to keep the commercial zoning commercial. Sounds an awful lot like people who want to keep an R1 an R1. Anyway, okay. Julie Hart had made some statements. She was the Thrive Lady. Unfortunately, they went too fast for me to catch, but I'm almost positive that one of those graphs is backwards. And a point that she made sort of was spoken directly against one of the graphs that's on their study. I don't, unfortunately, don't have the details to go any further than that. But Ms. Craig's, from the Chamber of Commerce, mentioned the 2025 See You in Terre Haute report, which is kind of funny because I actually just happened to read that. Just one little fact that I'll throw out. Since that report came out in 2019, the average per capita income for Terre Haute residents has gone up a whopping $500 in six years. Clearly, you're going to have to get transplants to come and buy these houses and apartments because you're not seeming to find that here in Terre Haute so far. And people from the outside are going to have a tendency to think like me. And I can tell you in a heartbeat, we never would have touched any of those houses. We purposely looked for something with the yard, even though we have kids, and I had a very stressful job at Rose, and I didn't have a lot of time on my hands. We felt that the ownership part was very important. Okay. I believe that's it. Fantastic. Thank you, guys.
Mr. President, to that man's, young man's point, I'd like to take a five-minute break also. This is...
You're going to have to take a break. You don't have to have two little drains up here. It's been requested that we take a five-minute break. Usually, those turn more like into 10. So let's, let's just say 10 minutes, and we'll see you all back here soon. Thank you. Thank you.
I better take care.
And then, we will stop public comment and turn inward and the council will speak among ourselves and we will be asking the developer and their representatives and our attorney and others for their input. And then we'll vote. So, on that note, the next thing is to continue public comment. So if anybody has not spoken yet and would like to ask any questions, now's the time to do it. Please, it's your turn. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Kendall and thank you for this opportunity to speak. What I would like to state is just that it seems like a lot of the disadvantages in Terre Haute are due to lack of good planning or proactive planning and this seems to be very reactive. There's a lot of features, but when we look at maybe what's most important for Terre Haute, what would improve quality of life for people, is this development where resources and planning and activity should be occurring or could we be planning ahead? What would be ideal and then asking people to help meet those standards? So, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Is there anyone else who has not spoken yet who would like to address the council on this? Please approach the microphone. Welcome.
Thank you. President Nation, Council. I'll try not to say anything that's already been said, but I do have something I think that may be a little bit different. My name is Shelton Poland. I go by the name of Shep. For those of you who might not have met me, I hope to meet you sometime. I live at 3715 Ohio Boulevard. I'm not a native Indianan, Hojer, Hoosier.
We can tell.
I've only been here a little less than four years and you can probably tell by the way I sound, I moved here from a little south of here. I've been here a little less than four years and the reason I'm here is I want to be here to see my grandchildren grow up. And I'm happy to be here in Terre Haute because it seems to be a nice place to live from everything I've done. My remarks right now are probably a little different than what's been said already and I'll try to read this, but what I want to focus on and I want to ask some questions and hopefully get some information, has to do with the application that was submitted for the RIT. I haven't heard anything yet about this at all and I've heard a lot of things about what has gone on, what's planned, what's not planned, what's been submitted, who did what, whatever, and I'd like to see if we could get, or if I could learn some information. I have not seen a copy of the completed application. All I can see is a copy of the blank application. I hope that with what you've seen on the application and what you've been involved with, you'll be able to answer my questions. I know it took a long time to develop the information that was put on the application and it's probably some of you people that are sitting on the council right now weren't on the council even as this was being developed at first. And since it was filed like Heidi's talked about last December the 13th, I'm sure all of you have had it, had a chance to look at, read it, digest it, understand what it says. So, that's kind of why I'm asking these questions. The way the, in reading the blank application, the way it appears to be structured, what the state is asking for is they're saying that the city is growing and the city needs housing in order to be able to continue to grow. And as you look at the application, on the very first page of the application, one of the first questions asked, it says, "What is the number of residents experiencing housing cost burden?" What is that number? And it's on the application, so if y'all could give me that, or give us an idea of what that is, I'd appreciate it. The second thing, and it's also on the first page of the application, is the question, "Has the city voluntarily revised ordinances and/or zoning to accommodate the project?" And if this is a yes, when and how and where were those revisions made? Is that something that you have that we could look at? On the second page of the application, there's a housing market study and I know that I've learned in past meetings that this housing market study has already been discussed several times and it indicates how many units, single-family, multifamily rental units, it indicates how many are needed. How old is this information that was put on this application? Has it been updated to the current trends? Does it include what's being developed like over on Fruit Ridge and Holman? What happened at Poplar and Adams? The other new housing that I'm learning that is being built around town, are these factored into this too? Not have been, I haven't been here all my life, so I don't know, but since I've been here, I've seen elementary schools closing and I understand now that they're meeting tonight to see what other schools are going to close. The high schools are diminishing in population, they're fixing to be consolidated. I don't know whether this actually says the community is growing or not, it sounds to me like it may be going the other way. And then on the second page of the application, it required a narrative and a narrative that explained really what the project was all about. And I'm sure if you've read that narrative, you can tell us what it is, but one of the things in that narrative was a description of the community participation in planning this development. Now, if there is some of that that's evident somewhere in a record of when, where, how, and who all was involved, I'd like to see that, and I'm sure there's other people here that would like to see that too. And then on the next page, it goes through the signature blocks and I'm wondering, who signed that application? Was it signed by you, the council, or was it signed by the mayor or somebody else? So, I mean, these are things that when I start looking at an application, I begin to wonder about. After those couple of pages, there are exhibits. The exhibits are to include several different things. One of them is letters from employers in the surrounding area that state the need for the housing and what it is, why this particular tract of land needs to be singled out and used for this project, what that is. Another thing it asks for in the narrative is documentation of proper zoning for the project and the housing study. I know the housing study's been discussed in prior meetings, but my question is, has the information that the housing study submitted, that was submitted on the application, that is, the housing study information was used to present the application, has anybody checked the application against what the actual plan is to see if the number of homes that's required and the price range of those homes and the density and all of that, has that been compared to make sure that the actual application and what is planned as a project, do they match? I don't know. I hadn't seen the application and I can't compare that. And then lastly, this is again staying with the application, there's a checklist and just a couple of items on the checklist. Number five is a request, and I brought this up a minute ago, is for at least one letter from an area employer expressing the need for the project. Is that letter somewhere where we could actually see it and review it, know who that is and how it was written? And then last, the very last thing says, it asked for documentation of zoning at the time of the application. And is this a document that's available? Now, just one last thing and it doesn't have to do with the application, but at the last meeting, which I was not here, but the last meeting there was, it was brought up that there were two out parcels that were not determined as to what they were going to be, which to me means that this is an incomplete application because you've got a project that's being presented that's not complete. And if you've got an incomplete application and you've got, or incomplete project planned and you've got unanswered questions maybe on the application, I don't see how you can possibly vote on this project to rezone. And I ask you tonight, please think this thing through and if there's any questions in your mind as to why this thing is moving the way it is or not is, please vote no on this thing. We don't need to be rezoning something that's been in a plan and developing here for over 100 years.
Welcome. Just having a seat, all right. Please, approach.
I'm Lance Sanders of Ayupa, Local Police Union 133.
Jay Ambal, Local 758, Terre Haute Professional Firefighters, President.
I'll start off with, we don't envy you guys. Councilman Dinkle, I'm sorry. I'll make this easy for you, your answer is no. For the rest of the council, I mean, this is a big, this is a big ask that we're asking, but we do support this. We understand all these people here, we understand their views and they're taking a big step because we're asking them to do for the city what needs to be done. We have to have growth. We have to have homes. They want sidewalks, they want paved streets. So the rest of you council people, this is the beginning of the growth for Terre Haute that we need and we're asking you guys to pass this for the rest of the city. They have to trust the mayor and all his dreams and all his goals that he's going to get us to where we need to be and it starts with this project. So, we support this and we encourage you to vote yes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to approach the council, talk about this? Please.
My name's Colleen Davis. I've lived for 20 years in Edgewood Grove from 1991 to 2011 and my husband and I have lived on Keene Lane from 2011 to the present. I had not prepared to speak this evening, but I feel that I have to. I grew up in Southern California for 22 years. I lived in Iowa City, Iowa for three years. I taught and lived in Missouri for three years and my husband and I lived in Louisiana in a beautiful town called Natchitoches for five years. When I prepared to retire two years ago from my faculty position at ISU, my colleagues, I was a music professor, my colleagues said, "Surely you and your husband want to move to Bloomington. There's such a wonderful classical music culture there." And we actually lived in Bloomington for three summers while I was doing coursework and we lived two or three blocks from Bryant Park where we rented from a music professor who was from another country and had gone back for the summer. And the thought of moving to Bloomington was very appealing, but I thought, there's no place in Bloomington that's like this spot. There's no place, Bryant Park is a wonderful park, but there is no place as special as being able to walk through the park and walk down Ohio Boulevard or ride through the park and ride down Ohio Boulevard. My husband and I have spent probably more of our money than we should have going to the Classical Music Festival in Aspen, Colorado, many summers and there are special places there, but if we lose this, we will never get it back. It's irreplaceable and I am not against growth and I'm not against development of appropriate R1 housing in this parcel, even though I hate to think of all those trees being cut down and all those wonderful birds being put out of their houses, but we do need growth. We absolutely do need growth. We do need good, appropriate housing, but this is not the right project. And I'm a slow learner, but one thing I have learned is that when there is pressure put on, when there is time pressure put on, when you're told, "Oh, you have to, you know, you have to take this deal now, you have to sign now because this is, you know, this is only going to last for so long," that to me is a red flag and that is a signal to step back. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there anyone else who wants to make their first comments to the council? John, come on up for, and then we'll move toward wrapping up public comment.
Yes, very briefly, John Moraldo again, 350 South 22nd Street. And thank you very much for listening carefully for what, two and a half hours now? We appreciate it very much, everybody here. I was hoping to hear answers to the questions that I raised at the beginning. One was to the council and that is, under what obligation would the developer, Gibson Development Company be or have to follow the recommendations that were proposed in long detail by Mr. Maurer of the Planning Commission if the rezoning is approved? What are the legal obligations of the company? We've heard a little bit about, I don't know, the city could, under certain circumstances, sue the company, but that's not very clear to me what the answer there is. The three questions I asked to Gibson Development had basically, most importantly, to do with alternatives, alternatives. Okay, so, most of what we've heard tonight may leave the impression that ultimately you, we Terre Haute, has two options, either accept the project as it's proposed or cancel future development, housing development in Terre Haute. It's difficult. Are we really being asked to believe that there are no alternative tracts of land with alternative housing plans than this one? Are we really want, we really want to be pinned down to those two options, either cancel or approve this particular proposal? That's a rhetorical question. Thank you.
Okay, so, getting ready to close public comment. Is there anybody else? Vinnie, one more.
This is just in regards, Vinnie Isaiah, Edgewood Grove, Hudson Avenue. This is just in regards to something that was brought up earlier about there being apartment units in Edgewood Grove. There is one apartment building in Edgewood Grove that has 40 units, I believe. There's another one, a little smaller, very easy to miss, I think it has six units in it. Anything else that's a rental in Edgewood Grove, I believe, is a house. By that comparison, if you wanted Edgewood Grove to match the development that they're about to put in with the 176 units, that means there should be 440 units in Edgewood Grove. There's only 46. On the flip side, if it was to match the apartment unit density that you see in Edgewood Grove, there should only be 18 units.
Okay, so, on that note, we're going to close public comment and again, for those of you who've been with us before, you know that we will start talking to each other and asking our attorneys and others, the developers and their representatives for answers. So, council discussion, Councilman Chalos.
Could you have the mayor come to the mic, please? Mr. President.
Mayor Sakman.
Welcome. Councilman Chalos, Councilman Nation, members of the city council.
Real quick, there's been something, has some talk about other housing projects too. Can you talk about the housing projects that are going on around the city and the importance of housing in the whole?
Yes, Councilman Chalos. So, outside of this project, we have one Section 8 income-based housing project underway, one in design phase and one in almost construction phase, which we are bringing next week. Those come out to about 400-ish units. We will know when construction is done because those were not done through a PUD or MOU. Outside of that, we have 81 infill lots through redevelopment and then we also have a lot of neighborhood development. For example, up north in Terrytown, there's 72 total homes being worked on through multiple phases. You have Terra Vista Glen, you have Terra Vista Proper, which is right by where I live. You have a current development being drawn up for, two feet from my house, actually. There's a large field, they're looking to do 40 homes there. Additionally, we have our multifamily project, the downtown project, and we are in early discussions for one to two more along the river. In total, when you track it, there are like 17 that are in a, we feel comfortable, design phase, as in they're not in conceptual drawings, they're actually like bringing pro formas, working on rezoning, or have started construction.
Okay. And in the dozen meetings that we've talked, we've had some employers come, can you talk about the overall importance of the housing? I mean, we've had two employers here today.
Yes, so from an economic development perspective, and this has actually been hit earlier in the meeting, when the employers come to meet with the city, they first usually meet with the Terre Haute Economic Development Commission. The mayor is pulled in if needed, or sometimes the companies go straight to the mayor's office and then we pull in the Terre Haute Economic Development Commission if needed. The three top concerns are the condition of our schools, which that discussion is ongoing. Yes, the population is, we went up last year, about north of 58,000. However, when you look at the school population, even when we were still in the 60,000, it is significantly lower. That's, I'd be interested in the professor's standpoint on it, but I think it's a causation, borderline correlation with the declining birth rates that we are seeing in the United States of America, which we are seeing that in college enrollment and student enrollment. So that is always being discussed and that's why we're having the conversation we are now with the school corporation about their facility plan. The next question, Councilman Chalos, is often workforce development. So, what we do in Terre Haute that we, that other cities are not doing is, we try to match companies and programs with our universities and with our high school to create a pipeline from the classroom to employment. That is a new sort of trend that we're starting to do the last 18 months with a focus on population retention as well as growth. Through workforce development, we created programs, worked with programs like the Goodwill Excel Center, WorkOne, JAGCor, and a ton through IV Tech. The last is housing. What we have seen is a number of employers do shuttle individuals in. There are some improvements in the county that a lot of individuals live in, are kind of top-tier homes that you see a lot of residents live inside city limits. Those are the neighborhoods that are, as I believe Craig Fox mentioned, that's your zero to six. So when they're on the market, they usually last zero to six days. And we're seeing that predominantly on the east side and starting to slowly see it again on the north side of town. Downtown, it is predominantly a direct transaction, so like they have a buyer in the pipeline already, or that's where we're seeing the growth of rentals and infill housing.
Okay. And then also, they talk a little bit about the MOU. This gentleman here, here, had some questions about that and the ability of the administration to keep them on task if there was a problem. I don't think there would be, but if there was.
Yes, so we pursued a memorandum of understanding based off of the large volume of feedback we've received at the other seven previous council meetings. That comes from a concept that Lafayette just did. They had a huge rezoning for a heavy industrial site close to a residential area, so they wanted some, like, think concessions through negotiations. So, the developer approached the city saying, "Hey, not to exceed 176 apartment units, these sidewalks will be added, this landscaping will be added." The city did commit if the TIF were to approve, because this is for the TIF and the rezoning, if the TIF and rezoning were to go through, the city would commit to the traffic improvements. And so that was added in. And then our Thompson ditch trail study and the easement behind the property that separates Edgewood Grove, those have been loose discussions about a trail, but the developer went ahead and said, "Well, we'll give all that, quote, private land to the city to be able to build a trail when that trail plan were to be finalized."
And one more thing real quick before I adjourn or just yield the floor for now. There's been a lot of folks talking about crime, I talked to several worried about the crime from a perspective of renters into the park, things of that nature. Is there someone, police department, that can?
Yeah, I'll defer that one to Lieutenant Sears.
Mr. President and members of the council, Lieutenant Justin Sears, Terre Haute Police Department. We were asked to possibly prepare some of the, how this public safety would be impacted by a project of this nature, not only just by its nature, but with apartments as well. So what we did, we looked at nearby apartment complexes and nearby Edgewood Grove and compared calls for service, which include both the police department and the fire department. Excuse me, I've been sitting there for a while. Sycamore Terrace calls for service out east from 46, total calls for service, and this is from 2020 to 2024. This is five years, so we didn't shortcut that. 148 calls for service with 55 reports taken. Calls for service is anything, noise complaints, barking dogs, suspicious behavior, anything that you could possibly think of. The reports taken is usually some sort of minor crime or incident, but it could also be criminal mischief or minor fender benders, accidents of sort like that. So 148 and 55. Heritage Trail Apartments, 102 calls for service and 35 reports taken. And Village Quarter, 279 calls for service with 101 reports taken. So if you vary those over five years, very minimal. Just like Edgewood Grove, which we all agree is not a crime-ridden neighborhood, calls for service over that time, 456 calls for service with 171 reports taken. So, actually, if you look at it complete as a total, Edgewood Grove is very comparable to the other three as a total or combined. So that leads us to believe it's going to be almost no burden. It's not going to be any additional impact on public safety, the way that we patrol, enforce, or respond, and this all includes fire department responses as well. So with that, any questions? Or maybe, I don't know why I was up here, I've got 20 years of work in patrol if we wanted to talk about traffic on Ohio as well. So, we could do that. I also had three kids that went to Woodrow Wilson, so I know where the traffic patterns are there in Ohio and how they become problems, so.
Something I do want to add is like city ordinance violations. So we did look at that, and this I'm actually, to be honest, very proud of our code enforcement department. So the three or two years leading up to this administration's arrival, we had 450 tickets one year and about 750 tickets the next year. When this administration came in, we put a huge focus on code enforcement to enforce the current ordinances on the books and of course, this council and the mayor's office have been discussing additional ordinance violations. So we restructured code enforcement a little bit. We, last year, had 1,250-ish tickets, which I'm very proud of because we are now using the systems we have to enforce some of those local ordinances that through staffing or through other tasks hadn't been done and I can't compliment Jim Schneider enough about that. So, I anticipate that number not to go down, but to stay the same because we are really putting an emphasis on enforcing the state and local ordinance style, or, sorry, local ordinance violations that hadn't been there as much. And I really want to thank city legal, the city clerk, as well as code enforcement for going through that change. So we did, we purposefully put systems in place that did lead to an increase because we should be seeing an increase because we do want to enforce our local ordinances.
Okay.
And that's separate from like crime, per se.
Okay. I yield for now.
Thank you, Justin.
Yep.
Counsel? Councilman Azar.
Can you address, I don't know if it'd be Eddie or Brian or whoever, the mayor, there was one concern, I think it was Shell had about the application, something about, first page about they asked about zoning. I wrote that down. I don't remember exactly what your question was, but I felt like it was something that maybe they needed to answer.
I got, I wrote it down. And then just stop me for the additional ones as I go through, sir, please. So the, the first question is going through the pages of the application. It's zoning slash plat approved. And so the reason why it was submitted, it was actually submitted for February 2025, because that's when we anticipated plat approval. It's, I think it's very important to note, why was this project not zoned before it was submitted? Because these large projects do not rely just on public funds. They also, the lion's share of this project is private funds. So say we were to hypothetically rezone a parcel. If the private funding did not come into play, say there were issues with the investors, then the development didn't go through, we would have been stuck within R3 anyways on this corner. So it was, why would we rezone it, and then a project not happen, and then someone else can come in and follow our zoning laws and do something on that project instead of, well, let's apply. When the developers approached us and the application was submitted, they had not like confirmed all of their private investments, because a lot of those banks were waiting to see what the state would give out. So that's what makes that application honestly really difficult. It is a floating target. That brought us from December now to end of January, early February, where we received approval from the state for the IFA home loan. The project frankly was then dead. It was dead for about two months, mostly because the private financing side, and they were struggling to make the numbers work to get the private investment for the public. So since the project had stalled out, we kind of hung out and said, okay, at this point, the project is flat. The city submits a number of grant applications that we never even hear back. Sometimes we don't even get a no from the current federal administration. It just kind of goes in the queue. However, the private developers came back at about end of March, early April and said, hey, we are getting closer. We actually now do believe we have the private funding. So the reason why you hear July 1st approval versus August 1st approval is, to get to the pre-close stage, the state estimates about two weeks. But even if you get to a pre-close stage from the states, think the state bank, the private banks also have to issue that debt to the developers to build the project, and because it's a larger project and not like a home loan, that is another two-week process. So the July 1st date is backdated from August 1st. August 1st is also important, because as I explained to some council members earlier, that's when the application opens up again. That is, that's where you start getting some really big caution flags, a lot of the cities across the state. What we've been seeing under the current governor is a little bit different than the previous governor. One, they open up applications to be able to clawback funds and use them elsewhere for other projects. A great example is Ready 1 and Ready 2 and the IFA home loan. If we don't hit our percentages in Ready 1 or Ready 2 funding, those funds then get rescinded. So that's why you have that. And it is, I will be very direct with you, the pressure that we get from the state of Indiana current government officials is a stark difference than what we receive from former Governor Eric Holcomb. You can feel it. They've kind of, you know, they claim to have a $2 billion shortfall at the budget, so they are actively looking at ways to trim things back. And that's kind of where we started getting that, that I would say light pressure. So we contacted the IFA, I contacted the IFA again last week, again this week, and I do understand the IFA's perspective of, well, we don't necessarily want to issue this, you know, in writing, because then everyone who applies for the next round will see, wait a second, so-and-so and so-and-so city got clawed back. Why are we going through this? So that's kind of how we got to that position. The studies and appendices that they asked for are in the document, as well as a brief construction timeline. Thrive West Central Indiana, that housing study was completed in October of 2023. Some of the methodologies and tables had been updated, and we also sent them a summary of the other projects, some of the other housing projects that the city was doing as well. And those are on pages seven, six, seven, and eight. You'll see those attachments.
Just for the audience's benefit, let's assume this doesn't pass, and the land reverts back to an R, it stays at R1. Can you tell me what could go there? I'm not saying it will, not trying to make a threat. I just want to know, or I think they should know, what could happen should this not go through?
So I, I can't speak to everything that's permitted in R1, but there, there's a list there. The only reason we're here before this council, well, there's two. Obviously, the rezoning aspect and the TIF portion. If it stays R1 and someone wishes to develop that prod, that, that parcel, no one will be coming before this council. This council will not dictate what happens there whatsoever, whether it's one house, one mansion in the middle, or the maximum number, 250-plus houses on minimum lot sizes. So anything from nothing to, again, we've done the math, it may be closer to 300 houses that could go on the parcel.
But it's more than houses. But it's more than houses that can go there.
Houses, churches.
Cemeteries.
Cemeteries, yes.
Which are where?
Anything that's permitted in R1 already, which it is lengthy, and I don't, I don't remember all of them off the top of my head.
And I, I'm, I'm going to be totally upfront and honest with everyone. I don't think that, again, if this would not pass, I don't think Mr. Gibson would use this as a way to build houses that aren't, that wouldn't go in the neighborhood. What concerns me is, he could sell the property, and then maybe the person he sells it to could do what they want in an R1, and this council would have no say-so at all in what goes there. Is that correct, under an R1?
Absolutely. Anyone could buy it. And I, we talked a lot about Mr. Gibson. I mean, this is unprecedented, doing this MOU. I mean, just to show the good faith that he's put into this, being willing to take the extra step to say, hey, this is exactly what we're doing. You're not going to get that with other developers or other landowners.
I just want to make sure that, that whoever's here knows what is possible if this doesn't go through. And if, if you're willing to accept that as a, as a possibility, I just, I would like to know if that's something you're willing to accept, because it could happen. And I'm not saying it will. The land's been, you know, hadn't been developed for a long time, but that doesn't mean it won't be. And again, I know Greg very well, and I know that he's not going to put up something that would be, wouldn't satisfy the, the area, other than the apartments. Well, I'm not talking about apartments now. I'm talking about if he would have the property, I think that he would just end up selling it to someone else, and then we would have no control over that property.
To be clear, because the question has been asked, there is no Plan B. So there is no, we walk out of here and the rezoning doesn't pass, oh, no problem, we're going to build houses. I just want to make sure that's abundantly clear.
He has not committed to doing anything else other than what it is here.
Correct.
Okay. I yield.
I guess this is, and it's over the MOU, and I know we've discussed it over and over, and Eddie represents the petitioner, so maybe we could ask our representation, city attorney, because it's been asked, is this MOU enforceable as contractual? And I'd just like to have that on record from our city attorney. That way everybody can hear what the answer is from the city's side.
The answer to your question, Councilperson Lautermilke, is yes. The MOU, I believe it is enforceable. You know, as you recall, your normal counsel, Mr. Slagel, distributed an email regarding the same issue. The things that he referenced in that email, you know, regarding ambiguities or, you know, verbal agreements that maybe weren't reduced to writing, you know, those have no part in the, in how an MOU is to be analyzed, and there's nothing in this MOU that leaves any questions lingering in my mind. The document clearly defines what representations are being made by the developer, and clearly defines what representations are being made by the city. I would agree with Mr. Felling in that these are not common when it comes to regular zoning requests, and they form a contract that the city could enforce if it viewed the contract as being in breach.
I appreciate that. And I know that Mr. Felling used to be our former city attorney, and so I just want to reiterate, I mean, I've spent one term on, and in my second, I don't remember us ever doing an MOU and having a developer offer that up.
We've never had that, during my tenure, no.
With their rezoning. And then just one last thing to Mr. Shep's thing, and when they asked the mayor about rezoning prior to the application, had that been rezoned to R3, and then like he stated that it, the application didn't go through, or the development, you know, they backed out, at that point, we would have already had the property zoned in an R3, and they could have sold it. And again, at that point, anything that's in an R3 could have gone in there. So I, I kind of understand that. It was kind of a protection both ways to try to not have us go ahead and do an R3 and then have that development. So I just kind of wanted to, to throw that out there as to why I believe that they didn't come and have it zoned prior, because if that would have happened, it would have been an R3 and, right, it-
Right.
It fell through. We could have, anything could have went there. So at this point, I yield. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilperson Lautermilke.
Eddie, in your role, former role as city attorney, can you contrast what a planned development might look like relative to the rezoning that's before us, with specific, specifically, if this were, or rather, had been proposed as a planned development, saying, this is what we're going to do under these circumstances, and we had passed that, and then it didn't materialize, what would happen?
It would revert to the original zoning classification.
Good.
But there is a little bit of a difference. So you mean planned unit development or planned development?
I'm not sure which one I mean. I know that there are, I've always been confused about a PD versus a PUD.
Really, it would have happened in either situation, but it wasn't really appropriate in this case. We try and use those planned developments purely in situations where we have a unique zoning use that doesn't really fit any of our current zoning classifications.
I remember that.
That's typically why we use them that way. We could have gone the planned unit development, and actually, the developers were surprised that I wasn't proposing it that way, but because of the timeframe in which we needed to get this resolved to decide, figure out whether we were going for with the project or not, the planned unit development takes an additional probably at least 60 days for that process to go through, because it has to go to the engineering department as well. So that's why we went the route that we went.
Thanks. That's something that some of us have talked about among ourselves and wondered whether or not that might be a, a good way forward for stuff like this, to try to entertain these kinds of proposals as, whether it's a planned unit development or a, or a planned development.
And, well, what's interesting though is, we've kind of done that through the MOU, right? So contractually, we can't do anything other than what's in our proposal. So it would really just sit there to no effect if they didn't do exactly what they told you they were going to do.
And to be clear, I appreciate that we as a, a city, as a governing body, are entertaining an MOU, entering into an MOU, and starting down that path, recognizing the need for these kinds of instruments. And Eddie, I think that you are probably uniquely responsible for us being able to have that kind of a, to get that going, because of your former role as city attorney, who has seen the city side and tried to work for the city side of these kinds of proposals in the past, so.
I'm sure my future clients will be pleased.
Let's hope. Anybody else? Councilperson-
I'm not ready to really question yet, but while Eddie's here, I wanted to ask him about the MOU. So on page two, line four says, "The memorandum may not be amended except pursuant to a written instrument signed by the parties."
Correct.
So that means, did anyone, or do they all have to agree to change what's agreed to in this MOU?
They would all. That's, honestly, that came from an old MOU, so I just reused one that we, I had done in the past. But it's like any contract. So any contract you ever enter into, as long as all the parties agree to a change, you can amend a contract. But all the parties would have to agree.
So on this MOU, it's, the people are specifically listed, the landowner, the developer, multifamily developer, the single-family developer, and-
The mayor. Correct.
All right. I just, while he was here, I wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
If I may, I don't, I would have brought the MOU to the council, but I've never seen, I don't know that you have the authority to do that under the, under the circumstances that, under the time crunch we were in, I didn't want to propose something out of the blue. They are done consistently through the executive office. So that's why I went through the mayor. It wasn't done to circumvent this council. I want to make that abundantly clear.
Thanks. Who's next? Well, so to remind us, we are talking about special ordinance number 182025. This is the rezoning, and we've done public comment. We're at what seems to be the end of the council discussion. So I'll entertain a motion.
I move to vote on special ordinance 182025.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Just to clarify, it was a motion to pass.
Yeah, you need to say, I move for approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Chalos and seconded by Councilperson Lautermilke that we approve special ordinance number 182025. Councilperson Chalos?
For Mr. Jay, I'm sorry I didn't write your name down, but let's do a roll call.
A roll call has been requested. Michelle?
Councilperson Thompson.
No.
Councilperson Lautermilke.
Yes.
Councilperson Hinton.
No.
Councilperson Dinkle.
No.
Councilperson DeMann.
No.
Councilperson Chalos.
Yes.
Councilperson Boland.
No.
Councilperson Azar.
No.
Councilperson Nation.
No.
Mr. President, that is two yes, seven no.
Okay, so the rezoning, which is special ordinance 182025, fails. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Resolution 132025, approving a declaratory resolution declaring an area an economic development area and approving an economic plan for Brickyard Estates and Paddock and the Park allocations area.
Dustin, I didn't even know you were here. Welcome.
There he is.
I've been politely sitting back there and letting, letting Eddie do all the, all the talking, so.
Let's, uh-
Yeah.
Let's just take a moment, and it'll only be a moment. I don't want to take another 10-minute break. I don't want to take another 10-minute break. There's probably something we could do. How was your drive over from Indianapolis?
Oh, it was, it was, it was very nice. It was very nice. Had good, good, good weather.
But it's, all right. So now we're going to, let's gavel it back in. Thank you. So, resolution 13, you're on.
Good evening, Council President Nation and members of the city council. My name is Dustin Meeks Barneson Thornburg here on behalf, I'm sorry, the law firm Barneson Thornburg, here on behalf of the city's redevelopment department and the redevelopment commission. The redevelopment commission has two resolutions that they would like you to consider this evening. These were previously introduced at the council's meeting in May. What these resolutions approve are the establishment of an economic development area and a, what we call an ordinary TIF allocation area on two parcels at the corner of Fruit Ridge and Ohio Boulevard. And then there's a second resolution, which establishes what we call a single-family housing allocation area. The difference is between your regular allocation area and a single-family allocation area is that your commercial area, your regular allocation area, can only capture commercial property, and then your single-family area can capture what we call 1% or single-family residential kind of homestead type, style property. The understanding that the, the rezoning has, has not happened, the redevelopment commission still would like you to consider these resolutions for the reason that there is sort of a cost to go through the beginning part of the process to set up an economic development area and these allocation areas. And if we complete that process, it doesn't cost anything to have the areas going forward. And what having the areas in place on a going-forward basis from, from now allows is, on the one hand, in the event that these parcels were, were ever developed in the future for, for single-family housing, at least the single-family housing allocation area would, would generate increment that, that might be used, for example, for some of the improvements to the road infrastructure that has been discussed tonight and is mentioned in the road study. And additionally, what it, what it does, is the existence of these allocation areas gives the redevelopment department an in to kind of try to involve itself in the future development of this parcel, because you can say to developers, we have, we have these allocation areas, and there's a possibility that you might generate increment, and how can we be involved in your project? And so we've talked about kind of the scary possibility of the city having no control about what happens on these parcels as long as it's within R1, and the redevelopment department feels that having these allocation areas in place still would be, would be a helpful way for the city to potentially remain involved in the future of these, of these parcels. And as mentioned, it doesn't necessarily cost anything to have the allocation areas once they're created, when we, all we have is this sort of sunk cost of getting as far as the city council. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might, you might have about the resolutions.
Before I open this up to public comment, I would like to ask you one question.
Absolutely.
Do you need, if we need time to figure this out, is it going to screw it up? Could we table this?
I think that there's going to be a lot of regrouping, so I don't, I guess, that is a Jordan question. That is, you have, you have asked, you have asked a Jordan question, and I would.
Welcome, Jordan.
Thank you. Yeah, let's, let's go home. We're good.
So hearing that, first, to go through all the steps, the next step is to open the floor to public comment.
Mr. President, you have had a public hearing previously on these.
Okay, so we don't have to do that if anybody isn't quite ready to go home yet and would like to come and rehash some of the same things that we've talked about. We can do that. Otherwise, council, is there any council discussion?
Councilman Nation, I've got a quick question for Michelle. I just want to confirm, if this were to be tabled or no action taken, then the ordinance itself is still there?
It has to be tabled.
It has to be. Okay, thank you.
It's a resolution, so there's no vote to take action, and we've already tabled this from May.
Thank you. Okay, I, because it's the residential one that I'm still looking at now that I need to be able to have as an option.
Definitely need a motion for tabling.
We're looking at 13 and 14.
Thank you.
July or August? So if council members do not have their phones open for the calendar, the meetings in August are the 7th and the 14th.
Councilman Dinkle.
Just for clarification, can I move to table, do I have to do it separately? Or can I, that's what I thought. Okay, I move that we table resolution 132025 to the August 7 meeting.
Second.
Question? Do they have to be refiled differently because it says it's got the name Brickyard Estates and Paddock at the Park? And if that didn't pass, then how, is this supposed?
So the, then, we, I answer this question, and I, I, there's a funny way to answer it, and I don't, I want you to know I'm not making funny, Councilman Azar. You could call an allocation area Steve if you wanted to. So that the name doesn't really matter.
Can we change it to Steve then?
We, heck yeah, we can. Yeah, so, and, and, and I actually, I talked about this with, with, with Council President Nation, that the redevelopment commission has an ability to do, to do some modifications to the declaratory resolutions at, at their last stage. So if you, if you promise to show up to the RDC meeting, I promise to modify it so it's the Steve allocation area when we're done. There we go. There we go. The George Azar is awesome allocation area in the, in the Steve Economic Development area. There you go.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor by Councilman Dinkle that we table resolution 132025 until our August 7 meeting. And it's been seconded by Councilperson Bowland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one's tabled. Next item of business.
142025, approving an amendment to the declaratory resolution for the Brickyard Estates and Paddock at the Park economic development area and economic development plan.
Do you have anything to add?
Nothing additional, Council President.
I move that we table resolution 142025 to the August 7 regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Dinkle, seconded by Councilperson Thompson, that we table resolution 142025 to our August 7 meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one's tabled.
Mr. President, just a reminder, there is only one meeting in July, and it is July 10.
July 10. And wait a minute, don't we have a special call meeting before that one?
5:45. You'll send out, I'll send out notices the week before. It is on CHI overhead doors, CF1 form.
Okay. George, you're on.
I will make the most popular motion of the evening. I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Azar, seconded by everybody, that we adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.